This meeting is held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press, all notice or file with the Board's Secretary. Irene, please call us to order.
Today is Tuesday, January 28th, 2020, 7:07 PM. Christopher Evoloni.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Eric Galbo. Brittany Ashman.
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
And Tim Slick.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. We'll hold off on some of the housekeeping items, only to discuss, and just for everyone's knowledge, this, of course, is being videotaped by ASBRTB. And the first area that we would like to discuss just between us on the board is the zoning board bylaws. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the bylaws?
Yes.
Yes.
Is everyone in agreement what's written there?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anyone have any changes to it that they would like to propose or make?
No.
Not at this time.
You did good. Good job. Not easy, right?
No, no, and I want to thank Irene for all the help that she gave, and of course, Jack Serpico, who was not here tonight, and I'd also like to mention something about Jack as well. He's not able to attend tonight specifically because his mother passed away. And we have Mr. Beekman here in his place, so if anyone is going to want any of the arrangements that will be made for his mother, he's going to let me know, so I will let anybody else know as well. Anyway, so Irene, based on that, I think you can call a vote for the bylaws.
Okay, and I get a motion to approve the 2020 zoning board bylaws.
I'll go.
Done?
Yep.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Russell. And Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Eric Galbo. Oh, I'm sorry, Eric's not here. Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Christopher Evoloni.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you all. We've adopted our new zoning board bylaws, and they'll be available for anybody who would like to see them. So, moving on right into the first application, we have some old business. It's the charter school over on Third Avenue that was originally approved, oh, I guess I'm going to say about two and a half years ago now.
February 2018.
And Mr. Caris, it's your show.
I am back. We're here for resolution compliance tonight with regard to that application, to review how things basically are going in terms of the conditions that were set forth in the resolution. I'm just putting my appearance on the record, Andrew Caris, the property owner of Fox Roychild, on behalf of the applicant college achieved, shouldn't say applicant, the approved.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, we're here to discuss the issues with regard to the resolution, how we're doing with that. My one witness that I did have tonight, Jody McNerny, because of personal issues at the school, cannot attend tonight, so if necessary, will come back another time, he'll provide testimony. We do have Officer Rang, who is familiar with the traffic patterns and how the school's operating.
Let's back up a little. First, Mr. Caris, the reason why we're actually here was because of summons that was provided by the zoning officer. Is that correct?
No, I understand we're here because it's required resolution compliance. The zoning officer-
Well, we did maintain jurisdiction on the-
That is correct.
So, that's true, but my understanding, the summonses that are outstanding go back to November of 2018.
They go back a long ways from Barbara Van Wagner, who's not here anymore, and unfortunately, when I had inquired with her, it's the people that were making the complaints, so we can actually look into it, the dates that the complaints were made, I don't have any information. So, although it does provide that there were issues that had occurred, I don't have any information, any facts, to determine when those issues occurred.
Well, we do have the new zoning officer here, Mark Siegel, so I'm sure he could review those issues with you.
That's great, that's why we're here.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Please proceed.
With that, then, it's a matter to determine what issues there are and how we're going to address it.
Agreed.
Okay.
So, um-
Just to make sure my appearance, if that's all right. Charles Leblen, on behalf of property owner, Chairman Rango, 1003 Grand Avenue.
Mr. Leblen, you're going to have to speak up.
And perhaps you could get closer to the mic as well.
Yeah, I'm finished. Until I'm ready, I'll just have to present some of our observations about the conditions of compliance.
So, your word is it?
I appreciate that, Mr. Leblen, and welcome back. From this point of view, how would you like to proceed?
I think then we call Officer Rang first to discuss the traffic patterns, how things are working out, because I think that's critical, that's critical.
I think that's fine. Please come up.
Please, Mr. Rang, do you swear affirming the testimony during his pursuit of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Statement for the record?
Officer William Rang.
Please go, you're listening.
R-E-N-G.
Thank you.
Okay. Officer, you're on the force with the Asbury Park Police Department, am I correct?
Go ahead.
And you've been on the force for how long?
Twenty years.
And you're familiar with the location of the charter school on Grand and Third, am I correct?
I am.
And you were there to make observations, to make sure that traffic patterns are being adhered to, and that things are operating properly, to guard the drop-off and the pickup of students, correct?
Correct. I'm the city's traffic safety officer, that's why I was assigned that.
Very good. So, why don't you go through what your observations were, what, if anything, you deemed had to be changed, what was required, how compliance is going to be?
Well, first, the task was to make sure the way the agreement was set up was going to work smoothly and without any issues. Within the second day of the school opening, we did notice that the influx of cars dropping off students was great, so, and they were dropping off on Grand Avenue as they were supposed to. The buses were supposed to use Third Avenue eastbound to do their drop-off.
Perhaps you could face us, Officer-
(laughing).
You're providing testimony to the board, Officer Rang. Not to Mr. Caris.
Mr. Chairman, could he speak into the microphone, please? Thank you, Mr. Rang.
So, as I was saying, we first observed that Grand Avenue wasn't going to work for the pedestrians being dropped off by parents because of the amount of cars. It was just constant flow of traffic, causing a backup on Third, on Grand Avenue, causing problems at Third and Grand, the intersection itself, with parents waiting. It was a mess. There was people dropping off on the opposite side of Grand Avenue, and the children having to cross over. So, right away, after the second day, I made the decision to switch it and have the buses, since there was only three buses coming in, have the buses use Grand Avenue and have the parents utilize Third Avenue.
I was not aware of that.
So, once we set that up, it went much smoother. The only complaints that we got in was the double parking and such from the parents as they pulled up to drop off, which we also eliminated that by having that section in front of the church or the school, being a no parking zone in the morning and afternoon hours for allowing cars to pull up to the curb and drop off the students, which worked out quite well, having gone set up. We watched that probably for the first two months, and the school had it down pat and seemed to be working smoothly.
Have you made, over the past two years of the school's been open, have you been able to go over and make observations as to whether or not the traffic pattern that was revised is working?
Yes. Last year, we would receive minor calls into the chief's office or into the traffic office complaining about double parking and the such. So, I would go down, and I would sit down there with their staff and just watch the flow of traffic, and every time, from time to time, you would have a vehicle block a driveway to drop off their child, but you're dropping off a child, it's basically a 30-second ordeal. So, there were residents that were upset about it, but it wasn't-
Have you recently taken a look of how it's going at this point, Officer Rang?
At this point, this year, we haven't had any complaints, and I haven't been down there to observe it. This year, based on not having any complaints, I don't even think there's any problem. And probably the latter part of last year's school season, I wasn't down there, and it was running smooth.
Now, you indicated there are coincident out there also?
Correct.
And when you didn't make your observations, were staff members from the school assisting with the drop-off and the pickup?
Correct. That was part of having that section in front, being no parking. We did ticket a few vehicles that weren't complying with it, the residents that were leaving their cars there, and after we ticketed maybe two cars, they were able to move their, you know, they, we eliminated that parking issue, and then the staff would come out, meet the students at their cars, and walk them in, rather than the parents getting out of their car and walking the child in.
There's signage there right now on Third Avenue that specifically states no parking between certain hours, Officer Rang?
That's correct.
And that's being complied with by all the various neighbors and whoever wants to park on Third Avenue?
Correct.
From your perspective?
To my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints. Again, we did have the school call a few times when there was an influx of cars parked there during the time they're not supposed to, and we addressed it with summonses, I think, once, and it stopped.
And you have not seen any more complaints from anybody in the neighborhood?
Not in the neighborhood or from the school.
And all the signage itself that was required to be installed?
Correct.
To your knowledge? What about crossing guards? Under the resolution, there was supposed to be a crossing guard on Third and Grand, but I understand that was determined was not indeed a requirement, correct?
Correct. Back in, I guess it was two years ago, I met with the staff of the school. My determinate, determining for a crossing guard is where the kids are going to be crossing and whatnot. So, I asked for a list of all the students that would be walking, and then, of course, where they're walking from, and their ages, and if they're assisted or non-assisted.
Agreed.
So, once I had that meeting, I believe the, if I have to check my notes, but I believe it was just one family that has two students that were walking down Third Avenue, and there was no need for a crossing guard because they weren't crossing any major thoroughfare that would require-
And when did you do that?
I'm sorry?
When did you do that, meet with them?
That would have been when they, right after they first opened.
But, as you know, though, every year is a different class that comes in, correct? So, that there could be other students that would be walking.
That's correct.
So, unless you meet with them each year, how do you know there's a crossing guard required?
Usually, how the crossing guards request commend for either hiring new crossing guards or a new location, it's usually done by either parents being concerned about it and bringing it into the traffic office, or the school being concerned about it and bringing it into the traffic office, and then we would do a study and figure out if at all we need a crossing guard. There's no state corridor going to that school in the city, so it would have to be something unique just for that school.
Mm-hmm.
And again, that could come in from a parent, that could come in from the school.
And am I correct, the determination whether or not that crossing guard is based upon the police department's evaluation?
That's correct. That would be an evaluation on that.
I don't have any further questions for the officer. Does anyone on the board? Or professionals? Does anyone in the public have any questions for Officer Rang?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, Ernest Minoli. I live at 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Officer Rang, could I Oprah your traffic and your studies? I mean, is it in writing?
I'm sorry?
Your analysis of the traffic, the students, the crosswalk, is it in writing? Like, did you do studies?
Correct.
Are they in writing?
No, they're not in writing.
Well, I don't understand how-
Are you asking questions or-
Yeah, I am. I'm saying, okay, he said, "No, they're not in writing." Okay. How can you come before the board as a, as an expert, you don't have anything in writing?
That's rhetorical.
Well, that's a question.
Sustained.
I'm asking the expert, not the lawyer. Nothing in writing? I can't Oprah anything?
I've already answered that, no.
Okay, so, okay.
It's based on his own evaluation of the situation.
And the board will accept that?
I will accept his testimony as a, as an expert in traffic coordination, yes.
With nothing in writing?
Yes.
Is that a standard policy, how the chairman of the zoning board would accept?
You're not questioning me, Mr. Minoli. Do you have a question for Officer Rang?
Well, you just made a statement. You said you'll accept it.
Do you have a question?
All right, so you're going to cut me off. So, the idea is, there is nothing in writing, and I don't know how you would then bring in a professional expert, police officer, where children are involved. This is critical, children. Children get run over by school.
Again, we're, this is comment, we're here for questions.
No, so I'm asking you-
Sustained.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Minoli. Do you have any other further questions for Officer Rang?
Yeah, I do. So, Officer Rang, are you aware that sometimes children are injured in crosswalks here schools?
This doesn't pertain to-
Yes, it does pertain. I'm asking about the charter school.
Officer, do you have any other further questions that are relevant to this application?
I think what I'm saying is very relevant, and you cutting me off, I think, is highly irregular. So, that's my statement.
And question, why are you even cutting me off?
Any other questions for Officer Rang? Please, Mr. Leblen.
Yeah. Officer, hi. I'm Charles Leblen, representing the neighborhood property owner on Grand Avenue. So, right at the start is when you decided it would be safer to-
Mr. Leblen, could you please come up closer?
Sure, sure. Right at the start is when you decided it would be safer to shift the school buses to Grand and have the-
That's correct.
-car drop-off, okay? And that was just in your professional capacity, this is going to work better?
It was an observation of a-
Okay.
-back-up.
Okay, all right. All right, yeah. We, yeah, we just didn't, we just didn't realize that when we had seen, constantly see the cars, the buses on Grand Avenue, that you admit that information, it's good to know. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Leblen. Any further questions for Officer Rang? Thank you, officer.
Sure, thank you.
We have someone back there.
Please come up to the mic, state your name.
Question?
Yes.
So, my question is about-
State your name, please.
Rebecca Shundler.
And your address.
505 Third Avenue. Question about that area close to Grand on Third where there's no parking. My understanding is that was intended for the buses to be able to pull up there. The drop-off, the parents don't use that area. The drop-off starts at the parking lot, so that area, you know, staff, I think, are parking there, but residents can't, but it's not being used for drop-off at all.
Do you have a question for Officer-
So, my question was, is that area intended to be the parents pull over and use that lane for drop-off?
Directly in front of-
Right adjacent to the-
Just east of their driveway, yes.
Yeah, just in front of the church. Close to Grand.
I'm sorry?
Close to Grand.
Okay, oh, I'm Grand.
So, the parent, are the parents encouraged, supposed to pull over into the parking lane, line up there, and dismiss from there?
That's the way it was designed, so that there would be plenty of room for plenty of cars to pull up, so if you have-
So, they should be pulling into parking, not dropping off from the right lane of the street?
Correct.
That's correct. Because that's not what's happening.
It's, it's whatever- Again, this is testimony, turn on the comment.
I sustain.
Thank you.
You can, you can make these comments at the end of the application if you have direct questions for the officer.
Yeah, I guess my question is, was the intention of that lane to be actually where the dropping off is happening? And the answer sounds like yes.
That's the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Officer, indicating your observation, was some parents do come up, they double park, and they let a child down, am I correct?
That's right.
And although it's not encouraged, they're not supposed to do that, you have made that observation, correct? But you're aware, though, it only takes them to do that, more than 30 seconds?
That's correct. They're just dropping off, they're suited, and they are usually greeted by the staff from the school, and once they're greeted, they leave.
As you know, Officer Rang, we had originally designed the situation a little different, and you kind of modified how we had the, first, the buses would be on Third Avenue and the drop-off would be on Grand, so now that you've switched it, you've kind of taken over that whole area of responsibility of how it was going to work, correct?
Correct.
So, I can't really answer the questions appropriately for the audience in terms of how it was supposed to work now, but you say it works better.
I think it's better and safer.
I'm going to have to accept that as testimony, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Please, Mr. Harris.
Okay, Officer, when children are coming from what I would say, the, are children crossing from the north side of Third and from the east side of Grand going to school?
If you're coming from where, North?
North side of Third, going to the building, and the east side of Grand, going into the building.
I'm not sure with the question.
Are kids, are young people crossing the street to get to the school?
No, 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 that, again, that was part of that stipulation, is that they would only be dropping off on the, the south side of Third Avenue. They're not going to drop off on the other side and cross over.
So, that's why you don't have a crossing guard out there?
I, I'm sorry.
So, that's why you don't have a crossing guard out there? Because children are not crossing the street?
Correct. There would be no need for a crossing guard, and it'd be, I believe the original thought of a crossing guard was that Third and Grand itself, at the intersection, and there's no students crossing Third and Grand at all. I mean, if you needed, if they wanted a crossing guard to assist in the middle of the road, right by the school there, to assist that kind of crossing, that would be inappropriate because there's no crosswalk.
Okay, but how many children are walking this year? See, my concern is the young people that would walk to the school. It's one thing for parents who are dropping their children off, but it's a totally different thing for children who are walking to school, having to cross those two intersections.
Correct. If there's a need, then, you know, if, if there's a need for a crossing guard at those intersections, and it's brought to my attention, I'll definitely look into it.
So, the attention that's brought to a crossing guard is really, do the parents bring that to your attention, Officer Rang, or the administration of the school? How is it brought to your attention?
Anybody could. I mean, if, I've had parents ask me, you know, "Hey, how come at this intersection there's not a crossing guard?" And I would go out there and look at it and see how many kids are actually crossing there. The city of Asbury Park utilizes what's known as safe corridors to our schools.
Mm-hmm.
To many schools. And by those corridors, it's such as Comstock is a corridor, so almost all the busy intersections, even side streets, have a crossing guard, because most of the kids coming from the west side of town to the eastern, eastern side of town for schools will have a safe corridor to walk. When you're dealing with Third and Grand, and that charter school there, at that location, it's very difficult, because when we first started this, there was only two students that were walking.
Mm-hmm.
And it hasn't been brought to my attention that there's an influx of students walking, so if I'm not aware of it, I wouldn't be addressing it, but if, but if I am aware of it, I can address it by looking at it and make recommendations. And then the recommendations go to the chief of police, to the city manager, to see if the city manager is going to hire another, one or two crossing guards or whatever would be necessary.
I see.
So, I mean, it ultimately would fall on the city manager to hire.
Do crossing guards only deal with children crossing, or do they also at times help direct traffic and cars and pick up and that type of stuff?
They are directed just to cross children.
So, they're not involved in waving people over to park, or there's no-
They're not, they're not trained to do that.
Got it, thank you.
Would it be more viable for each year that the school is open to go out and reassess based on the fluctuating population of a school?
It's very possible. It's also possible for maybe the school to provide the traffic department with a list of walkers and their addresses, so that I can, that's how we did it the first time, was to look at where these students are, or where they live, and where they're coming from and walking, and also if they're assisted or not. Because if you have, let's say, one child walking and going to be crossing two main corridors, and it's going to be assisted by a parent, it's not going to be beneficial to pay a crossing guard, you know, two hours to be standing out there just to cross one child, if they're assisted by a parent. But if you have a larger amount of students that are going to be crossing, and some are going to be assisted, some aren't going to be assisted, there may be a need. So, if I had a list of who the walkers are, where they're coming from, it'd be a lot easier to map out what our needs would be.
So, the city doesn't take it on, as the school year changes, the city doesn't take on the onus to go out and check on it anyway, even though saved the children's at stake?
With what you're saying, I think it's a good idea. Since we're looking at resolution compliance and any updates that need to be made, maybe we do that, we provide a yearly list as to students that are walking, and then if determination can be made, as to whether or not crossing guards are needed.
Yep. The other part of this is that it's a, it is a new school, and it's in a unique location compared to our other schools. The Asbury Park School District has a change of walkers, non-walkers, students, non-students every year. I don't get a list from, you know, the high schools and the middle schools and whatnot about whom walks or doesn't, that's why we have those safe corridors, and they're pretty much, it's kind of spelled out how they're going to go, the parents know where to send their-
But you do have the charter school right on the corner of Grand. There's one further down, correct? How is that working, Officer Rang?
That, that one, the reason for that one is because of the Hope Academy Charter School that's there.
Mm-hmm.
So, Hope Academy had a large number of students that were walking back in the, I mean, that guard has been there for several years, the same one at Grand and Asbury Avenue. So, those two crossing guards are, were specifically made or equipped there because of the influx of walkers for Hope Academy. And also, the children going to Thirteenth Marshall as well, so there are some Thirteenth Marshall students that-
Yes.
-utilize those crossing guards. So, based on that, I would imagine, I wasn't involved in putting those guards in that position, they were there when I got here, so that's why, because then the Hope Academy had a big influence.
And it's only a couple of blocks away from the College of Chief Charter School, right?
Correct. But if you don't have, if you don't have the pedestrian traffic heading that direction, again, it would be, if you have it at Asbury Avenue, but there's no, no students crossing at First or Second and Grand, you wouldn't necessarily make that a corridor.
Do you also find at the Hope Academy the situation where parents double park at times?
The what?
They double park at times and they're dropping off or picking up kids?
It, we're, the city of Asbury Park is a city, and all of our schools are located in residential zones, so we have double parking at every single one of our schools, including, I mean, including the high school. We have problems right on Sunset Avenue in front of the high school, as wide as that street is, we have constant problems, and it's just the nature of our dynamics.
Please come up, show the mic.
My name is Stefan Ashan. I'm at 509 Third Avenue. Hello, Officer, nice to see you.
Sorry, what's your name?
Stefan Ashan. And I would like to follow up on your expertise regarding the observance of the traffic and of the people passing by. Would you please, could you please explain to me how you went about it? Did you go every single day there between 7:45 and 8:00 AM, and then a drop-off as drop off as well? How did you approach that statement that you just said, that that is an expert statement? I'm trying to understand how you came to the conclusion that it's a safe environment.
I'm not claiming myself as an expert, I'm claiming myself as doing my job. My job was to observe and to make recommendations based on my observations.
And how did you approach the observation? Could you please explain that part?
Just by sitting out there and observing what, what the vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic was.
And did that occur every single day?
I was out there for several days.
Did that occur every single day from Monday till Friday, or was it just on a Monday or just on a Wednesday?
Did what occur?
The observance for that statement that you just said.
There was a period of time, I believe I was out there for two weeks every day.
And you said two weeks every day, and which two weeks were those exactly?
I don't recall.
Was that in March, was that in September, was that in October? Was it just from, now from February, sorry, January first till January twenty-eighth?
I believe it was in September, but I don't recall the dates.
So what I'm hearing you saying, you just observed for two weeks and you gave your expert observation for two weeks?
Correct.
No further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who have any questions for Officer Rang? Thank you, Officer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Karas, how else would you like to proceed?
That's all I have.
Okay.
You know, we're focused on, you know, went through the signage, um, traffic, traffic patterns, and also the crossing guards. I think those are really the main issues that we're here for.
What about the staff members that are required to be present assisting and directing in the pickup and drop off of students and ensuring the orderly and expeditious vehicle drop off and pickup?
We had also Rang testify, he observed them out there during his observation periods. I'll have Jody McInerney will be here next time to be able to provide firsthand testimony as to how that happens.
And, and just to be clear, Mr. Karas, since this is, uh, you know, we were retaining jurisdiction over this application, um, I would like to review all the conditions at this point with your expert.
What, what other conditions, though?
Well, i- i- just to make sure that we're in, you're in compliance, the charter school's in compliance.
Well, the signage, we've had testimony, the signage is up.
Yes, a- and how many students are currently matriculating there?
Oh, we can, I'll get the testimony next time.
Right. Sure, a- and, um, we, we also need the testimony of Mark, Mr. Siegel as the zoning officer.
Yep.
Uh, do you want to proceed with that now, or do you want to wait to another time, or?
No, why don't we do that?
Okay.
You swear upon testimony that your testimonies will be the truth, and your testimony will be true?
I do.
Is that your name for the record?
Uh, Mark Siegel, S.I.E.G.L.E.
And your affiliation with the city?
I'm the principal planner and zoning officer of the city of Asbury Park.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some exhibits.
Sure. Uh, I think that's a good idea, yes.
How would you like me to mark these?
Um, I guess we'll mark them O one, right? I mean, this is a-
Um, I, I, I know we had a lot, so I don't know where we would start at this point, Mr. Beetman.
Since, since it's a new, well, I, I guess it's a continuation.
Why don't we mark, just date them today, mark them as new witnesses, I mean?
Why don't we just mark it like B zero one?
There's, there's two piles based on-
I, I don't know where to begin, so it's whatever you, you suggest.
Wouldn't make a suggestion.
We'll do C.
We're here for resolution compliance, so RC one.
Okay. That's fine, Mr. Karas.
We'll do RC, there's two sets, RC one, RC two.
Fine.
It'll work.
Yep.
So which is?
Yeah, let's, let's make it RCB one, because it's, it's, uh, an official, if that's right, it's official of the, of the city. And if there's any other markings, we'll, it's from the applicant, we'll call it RC X.
Please proceed, Mr. Siegel.
Okay, so as you know, we're here for resolution compliance with the applicant. Um, I've gone out there on six different occasions, three drop offs, three pickups, based on the testimony that, uh, Mr. Rang provided. We know that the applicant is not parking and doing the drop offs and pickups as per the conditions.
I understand that now.
In terms of signage, the signage has been installed on Third Avenue, the signage is not there on the way in. The applicant was supposed to install the-
Not us, the city. I believe the- No, it's, no, we went to the city and they passed an ordinance to do the installation of the sign.
Okay, I'm just going based on what the, what the, uh, resolution says and then, um, what's required of the applicant. Uh, there was supposed to be some signage for, uh, school drop off, pickup zones, uh, I didn't, didn't find that. Just making observations, um, no context either way. Uh, let's see. In terms of staff being present, uh, kind of assisting-
Just as a backup a little bit, Mr. Siegel, how long did you observe, uh, each of these times that you were there?
Typically, in the morning, I'd arrive around seven oh five, uh, I'd usually leave around quarter to eight, eight.
Okay.
Uh, in the afternoon, I usually arrive a little after three, I'd leave around quarter to four. In terms of staff assisting, um, yeah, wha- what counsel had said is they're typically out there helping, um, they're not always out there, so I think they need to be a little bit more consistent with that, um, in assisting, um, drop off and pickup. Kinda echoing, uh, what President had, had said during her testimony, uh, there really isn't any space for people to come and pull up next to the curb. Um, I bet they maybe, we need to start ticketing again, um, because there's, there's always cars parked there, whether they're people who live in the neighborhood, whether they're staff, I can't tell.
So they're not really-
Yeah, I mean, if you look-
-paying attention to the signage?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the, if you look at the pictures, you'll, you'll see there's, there's cars.
Are you, are you referring to this no parking sign?
Yeah, that's one of the signs that was, was in the resolution, no parking between seven thirty, eight-
Seven thirty and eight, three forty-five and four o'clock, and there are cars that are not complying with that?
Correct.
So it's, it, it would be, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna ask, which signs were not actually?
Uh, I mean, if you, if you read the, the resolution, I believe it's under, let's see, number nineteen, position number nineteen. Uh, the applicant shall proceed diligently to obtain the approval of the mayor and council of the city to obtain permission to install parking signs on Grand Avenue and Third Avenue indicating no parking from seven thirty AM to eight AM and three forty-five PM to four PM. Uh, the approval to install signs on Grand Avenue and Third Avenue with furniture property stating the school zone, and the approval to have crosswalks painted located adjacent to the school on Grand Avenue, Third Avenue and crosswalk signs placed on Grand Avenue stating pedestrian in school, children crossing. That's the whole position.
And there's, uh, uh, there's also number twelve that talks about signage as well? Which if I'm reading-
Correct, yeah, that's what I had mentioned before, that, um, there's a similar, there was an exhibit, uh, I believe it's eight thirteen and eight fourteen, which were shown during the hearing, uh, I believe it's at, they also have it at another school location, uh, for designating school drop offs, school, uh, pickups, and those signs, uh, aren't installed.
So if you had to describe overall what you thought of the actual coming and going of the students for this location, how would you describe it, Mark? Orderly, a mess? How would you describe it?
It doesn't meet the conditions, it, it didn't seem to be chaotic on, on most days. The drop offs in the morning tend to be, you know, parents just come up, pull, drop the kid off and go. Pickups in the afternoon tended, is where you start to see the queuing. I was out there this afternoon, there was probably eight cars double parked on Third Avenue.
How long are they there for? How long does that, the process take?
It depends on how early they get there, I mean, you can't control when a parent's going to get there, that's, I think, the problem with the pickup.
It is one, is one of the bigger problems, the fact that people are parked where they should be parked.
Create issues. Um, I don't know if you could, you could get eight cars, if, if eight, eight cars were to come at one time in that section where, that's designated, um, it certainly doesn't help.
At any one time, how long have those cars waited to get a kid?
Uh, I think at most, sometimes cars are there five minutes. Typically, cars, you know, the drop offs is usually, you know, twenty seconds, thirty seconds. Pickups anywhere from a couple minutes to five, six minutes.
Do you find where the buses are dropping off and where the, the cars are now dropping off works better than originally?
I mean, I wasn't, I'm not privy to the original application, I ha- I haven't seen that, uh, the original location in action. Right now, the buses-
Just in your estimation, do you think it's working better?
They double park in a bike lane that's on Grand Avenue.
Right.
Isn't something specific?
Did you have a question, cars parked?
There's cars parked there, but there's no, there's no sign there. It's only, uh, no parking, I believe it's nine AM to eleven AM on Thursdays, it's, it's not a school zone sign.
Street cleaning sign.
Yeah, it's a street, a street cleaning.
I'm trying to re, I didn't realize that the city never installed.
Yeah. So, um, I mean, it's never really been a problem, I was out there, I believe last week, um, and there was three full-size buses, and there's a state, um, adhere to pedestrian sign, pylon sign in the middle of the road. So with the three full-size buses there, cars coming, heading downtown on Grand-
Uh-huh.
-had to swerve into the opposite lane to get around them to go down. That's the only time I've ever witnessed any kind of-
Which is surprising to me, why the officer changed the, the configuration, uh, uh, because there's, Third Avenue's ob- obviously a wider-
At, at the time he was out, it, it probably warranted, uh, changing, I mean, he wouldn't have made the change without.
What about when you were out there crossing guards, did you make any observation of any kids that were crossing on Third and Grand?
Uh, during my time out there, I've only witnessed, uh, two children crossing, um, it was crossing Third on Grand on the school side. Um, that's only two kids I've ever seen walking, and it was on separate, separate occasions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Siegel? Mr. Liebling, do you have any questions for Mr. Siegel?
Good, what's that? Just one question, thanks. Mr. Siegel, when, when kids are being dropped off, um, I guess in a double parking situation, are they then kind of squirting between cars parked along the curb to get to the school?
Can you repeat your question?
Yeah.
I'm not remembering.
I'm just imagining a, a line of cars double parked, kids getting out, and then they're not at the sidewalk, at that point they've gotta walk between cars that are along the curb to get through, is that how the motion is occurring?
Well, typically, the car will pull up to where the driveway is on, on Third Avenue, open the door, either the child will, will run out the passenger side-
Mm-hmm.
-into the, into the parking lot and into the school, or the parent will get out and squirt them up.
Okay.
They're typically not yet, they're not in the area that was supposed to be for the bus parking, they're typically not squirting between those parked doors.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
I have a question for New Jack, I'm sorry, forget your name.
New Jack.
Jeff. Uh, so legally, what are we allowed to require the applicant, since there are complaints and there are obviously issues going on, are we allowed to ask for another traffic study?
Well, you have, um, I, I think you have a combination of issues. One is you have the issues of who's responsible for traffic on the street, right? I mean, and, and Mr. Rang, Rang testified about what his observations were. Um, I, I think you have to maybe consider some annual analysis every year, just I think Mr. Harris asked some questions about that, uh, but the annual analysis of who's walking, you know, what's the status. It sounds like there are still some compliance issues from what Mr. Siegel is testifying to, uh, that needs to be addressed, uh, because signage wasn't put up. Question there is, I, I don't know who's responsible for that, whether it's the applicant or, or the city, depending on the ordinance, uh-
Well, the city, I understand what, this, this is the first I'm hearing, all the signage has not been put up, because I remember being on the city to make sure it gets up after we got the paperwork, to make sure the, uh, crosswalks were painted and all that, um, and it was an effort to get it done, and it was my understanding all that had gone up. This is the first time I've learned that not all the signage had gone up, so I have to revisit it back, city has the-
You indicate that there was an ordinance that-
Yeah, they had passed it, yeah.
It might be, might have been helpful for the carry this to, to have that ordinance and, you know, even maybe Mr. Siegel could review that as well.
So resolution by the city.
Um, but, you know, as far as those things, there's, there's going to be, um, more police control, literally police control, as opposed to the, uh, the school to handle those things, because every year is gonna be different. You're, you have a different class of kids every year, um, and that's, you know, o- obviously with the city schools, they've been doing it for decades, so it's much easier. But this is a different, uh, situation, and every year I think it's gonna have to be reanalyzed, because you don't have, according to the testimony, you don't have that safe corridor-
Yeah.
The safe corridor is a walking corridor, separate from, from traffic.
Right, but it's-
And, and I agree that-
It's customary with the other schools.
In terms of what Mr. Harris said, in terms of getting a yearly analysis, let's get that, let's see, the safety of the kids, to make sure that if any kids are crossing that area, that warrants, um, to have crossing guards, certainly that should be done.
So just to circle back, Mr. Siegel, in your estimation, how is this working?
It's not working, it's not up to, it's not living up to the conditions, that's how, I mean, you guys had, had approved this subject to conditions, you had the right to place on the application. If, you might need to reevaluate, uh, you might need, you might need to modify, um, I haven't-
Well, what do you suggest in terms of modification based upon what your observations were, in order to make this?
I mean, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't seen it where, operating as it should, where there's designated drop off zones against the curb, where either a, a bus or a vehicle can pull up, so everything's been kind of double parking.
And is that because of the cars or?
The car, yeah, the cars and the lack of signage along Grand.
Okay.
Mr. Siegel, um, in your opinion, do you think that if a, a trained police officer were assigned to that position, it would be any better than just having crossing guards in? Right now, there's nobody there, but do you think if they put a police officer there, you, he could actually control the traffic and look out for the safety of the children?
I would assume so, I mean, people tend to respect the police officer or something.
That will cut down on the double parking too, or will move a little longer, a little quicker.
In theory, it might, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause right now, you, I, I know I'm supposed to be asking questions, but there's nobody there right now to stop people from duck or parking, there's nobody there to assist the walkers, no matter where they're coming from, so actually we are putting the children at risk, do you feel that?
That one children that, that-
No, I, I don't, I don't believe it's one.
Yeah, if, if there's an un-assisted child walking down the street, then yeah, yeah, he has the potential without a crossing guard to, like anyone else, yeah, potentially get hurt.
And if, and, and even if it's only one, we look out for that one.
Absolutely, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the board? For Mr. Siegel? Board professionals, any questions? Mr. Lie, Liebling, do you have any further questions for Mr.?
Well, I, I have my client here to, as, as a witness, to speak to compliance with some of, of these, of these conditions that you revealed. Um, I don't know how you wanna insert that into the, into the process, I was going to, you know, question her and have her present her observations the same way that you heard them from the other two.
Are there any observations that your client has that we've not already touched on?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think that's fine, but I'm just specifically talking right now about Mr. Siegel, so, do you have any further?
I don't.
I, I just don't jump ahead yet. So, I get, based on the fact that you sat down, you have no further questions for Mr. Siegel?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Siegel?
Hi.
Hello.
State your name again.
My name is Stefan Ashan, I'm resident at five and nine Third Avenue, just across from the charter school. Uh, Mr. Siegel, um, you just started working for the zoning, um, department for the city of Asbury Park.
Correct.
I just met, thank you. And it was Barbara from Warkner before, so, um, I would think, um, please correct me if I'm not correct. You were on that case for about four, four months? Since you're just reviewing the files and everything, is this?
Uh, you're asking about my, uh, how long I've been with the city?
Yes.
Uh, six months.
Six months, okay, thank you. And please help me, um, there is a section in the, in the variance that reference to that the charter school is required to come for a review?
Yes, condition number sixteen in the resolution requires the charter school to come back to the board within three months of resolution approval to, uh, review the conditions and make sure they're meeting the intent of the, uh, of the resolution.
Are you somehow not, do you have any knowledge if that has occurred?
Uh, my knowledge is the first time, I mean, it's occurred since, uh, the resolution was approved.
And would you have any knowledge of why that hasn't occurred?
Uh, I can't state what happened prior to my tenure with the city, I know-
That's really not Mr. Siegel's testimony.
Okay.
I- if you could be questioning specifically his testimony.
Yeah, okay. Um, and you mentioned you have been there from, um, you mentioned the time seven thirty till seven forty-five?
Uh, typically it's around seven oh five, seven o'clock, seven forty-five, it's not late, eight o'clock.
And in the variance, uh, please remind me that the drop off time is at seven forty-five from eight?
Uh, I don't, I don't recall with the-
Okay.
Time, and that's, that's a no parking, no parking time, yeah.
Yeah, um-
Well, parents tend to get there a little, a little earlier.
Okay, has there been any observance after that time, what happens in between?
After eight o'clock, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, hi, Ernest McNally, four hundred Deal Lake Drive. Uh, I fish and live in the area, and I'm very interested in schools and traffic patterns, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So my question to you, uh, Mr. Siegel, is, uh, when, when you were asked, uh, overall to- So my question to you, Mr. Siegel, is when you were asked overall to evaluate how it's going, I kind of, you had your back to me, I think you were trying to say, doesn't seem to be in compliance. Was that the essence of what you said?
Yeah.
I mean, it could be dangerous, like a kid could get.
Yeah, I was asked to observe the situation as early to the conditions. My observation was, it doesn't meet the letter of the conditions that's in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask you, were you asked to observe by the city manager, by the police chief, by the school superintendent, or who?
I had a conversation with the board chair.
Oh, okay, okay.
About the application.
So the zoning board?
Yeah, if I can go look at it, and I'd love to.
Okay, so is it safe to say that you were interested and the board chairman was interested because it's coming up on the annual, like where's the annual compliance? Is that why, is that what this is all about?
It was scheduled for a hearing, so I'm good to have some background knowledge.
Okay, thank you. So even though you're on the job six months, you seem to be interested in, you know how important the compliance review is, so I seem to be like you're here, telling it like it is, and we appreciate that. You also seem to document everything, is that correct? Are you pretty big on pictures and observation there? You keep a log or anything, or?
No, I mean, I take pictures when I'm out there, it's a way, I don't see through my eyes, I'm going to show it to the board.
Okay, but those are, I guess everybody knows pictures, whether you use it in a city phone or your own, are time-dated, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so are those, can I ask you roughly when those are time-dated, or?
There's no timestamp on those.
No, I'm saying, but they come from your phone, yes?
Correct.
Okay, so at some point, like if someone were to Oprah your, those photos to attach the?
They'll be part of the resolution and the file, Mr. McNolly.
Can I, is it okay if I ask him? No.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Is it okay for the public to Oprah your data? Because I'll tell you why. So far, you seem so far the most diligent and with records.
Mr. McNolly, if I can jump in here about Oprah, this witness is not quali, he didn't testify about Oprah?
No, I didn't say he did.
Let me finish.
Okay.
He didn't testify about Oprah. He's not qualified to testify about what the requirements are for Oprah. If you want to Oprah something, you're welcome to Oprah anything that you want. These photos are going to be part of the file, they're going to be in the records for the Board of Adjustment. So if you're going to ask about Oprah, I'm going to cut you off, you can ask him questions about his direct testimony.
Okay, so you took them with your, the phone that you used during your city work, and that becomes of record? In other words, every photo has a time date?
You're asking the same question again, Mr. McNolly.
Okay, well, forgive me, I'm so sorry. But, you know, this is about children, so, you know, let us, give us a little.
We understand that.
Do you really? Because how about the comment where it's not really worth it if it's only one child? I found that offensive, really offensive.
You're taking that out of context, and how did you?
No, I'm taking it out of the comment.
Come on.
Oh, come on, okay.
If I do a staging and resource a crossing guard.
Really?
It's completely out of context, it's inappropriate.
You know, I'm talking to the witness, not you.
But I'm objecting to your comment, and you stated.
My comment? You made the comment. You're saying it's my comment?
You just took something out of context. Go on, ask your question.
Was the comment made that if it's one child, perhaps it doesn't justify a crossing guard, it may not be worth it?
You're asking about testimony.
Well, do you want me to ask him or not?
Ask him about testimony.
Okay, I'm going to ask him again, the same thing. Did I hear it correctly?
Why don't you ask what his testimony is?
Okay, your testimony, was it that if it's one or two children crossing a corridor or in a crosswalk, it may not justify a crossing guard? Or did you hear that? Did you hear that come up?
That wasn't part of my testimony.
All right, you didn't say it?
Correct.
Okay, good. But you did say that in your observations, you were looking at the corridor places and you were noticing, I think you did, didn't you state that you saw a few children cross a corridor?
On two occasions, I saw one child cross Third Avenue headed in the direction of downtown on the side of the church.
Thank you very much. And that's critical, because I feel like you were not just observing the groups, but you were concerned about even if it's one child, because if it's one child, it's as important as twenty children. So, you know, I thank you for that.
Do you know where that child was coming from?
It was headed, coming from the fourth, fifth, that direction.
And heading to where?
Heading towards, headed towards the school.
Did you happen to notice?
It's a southern direction.
Have you ever seen the student bus list, the drop-off list, for the school, for the charter school?
I'm not very good at it.
Okay, is there a list?
I'm not very good at it.
That wasn't part of his testimony, Mr. McNolly.
What do you mean it wasn't? Of course it was.
He did not testify.
He was there, he was there.
He did not testify regarding the bus.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what your line of objection is, but he testified he was there in a new position to kind of see how the compliance was going.
He was watching the drop-off.
Okay, so keep cutting me off. I withdraw the question. I'm glad you're not advocating for children by interrupting me. So anyway, I'll take another question. How's that, Mr. Chairman?
Please proceed, Mr. McNolly.
Okay, thank you. So anyway, you did say that it's important, and I think you referenced that, or I think the city stand-in attorney is referencing that at least we need an annual review, isn't that correct? And when you were asked if it's, the compliance is the signage, the policing, et cetera, et cetera, you kind of said, in theory, it looks great, but when I'm there, I don't see it. And is that a correct kind of?
An annual review might be helpful, ultimately, up to the board to determine whether they like bringing applicants back for an annual review.
Do you feel an annual review is enough?
I don't know if I'm an expert in that, but I think an annual review probably would suffice to start off with.
We are talking about children here, correct? School children?
Correct.
And a school, charter school is actually, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's an extension of the public school system. It's not a private school, it's a char.
He's not testified as to how schools are set up under, I didn't hear that.
I didn't say that. No, no, but the compliance issue.
That's what you're asking.
You know, there we go. We've got the greatest, the greatest interrupters here, the attorney and the board chairman. So, look, is it a fact that you are concerned with the compliance issue? You talked about signage, you observed double parking, at one point, you observed the car even swerving into another lane. Is it your testimony that that's dangerous stuff?
Correct, yeah, a car swerving.
Okay, good, thank you. That's all, thank you.
I believe I made that clear.
Okay, is it also your understanding, as all of us, that you heard the expert police officer testify, or is that what it's called, testify? Stated, right? That he took it upon himself, not on anything he wrote down, not on anything he videoed, no pictures like you, he took it upon himself to modify something as important as school egress access? Did you hear him say that?
That is not what Mr. Siegel testified to.
What do you get out of this?
Do you have a question?
Always interrupting, I'm on an important line here, and you just keep interrupting me.
That's correct, Mr. McNolly, because your questions are not directly related to his testimony.
Yes, they are.
So do you have a question?
No, they are related, but your interruptions take someone off their direct line, which is very important. And I don't know what you get out of that, because this is about children, and you should stop interrupting people.
I am not interrupting you, I want you to get to the point and ask a question to Mr. Siegel that relates to his testimony.
Let me ask you something, is your job here to rile people? I'm a resident here.
Ernest, you're a belligerent pig, get on with it, miss.
All right, so back and forth has to stop.
Now, wait a minute, Mr. Siegel just called me a belligerent pig? Is that right, Mr. Siegel?
Yeah.
You of all people are going to call me? You of all? I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, I'm going to leave here. Is there a police officer here?
I do not know.
I would like to report what he just said to me at an open public meeting. How's that, Mr. Siegel?
Go ahead.
All right, he called me a belligerent pig, and the last time here, he said that he knows who's vandalizing my car. Right, so now that's two things, Mr. Siegel. Sir, and I want to thank the board chairman for allowing people who care about kids to be treated like this.
Based upon your.
And I'm glad this is on recording.
Did you see at any point any dangerous situation relative to the children that were going to the school?
No.
Anyone from the public for Mr. Siegel's? Please come up and state your name and address. Yes?
Hi, my name's Elise Cohn, I live at 509 and a half, Third Ave. So just to follow up on your question, sir, did you see any illegal U-turns made on Third Avenue while you observed?
I have, yes.
With the double parking?
Typically, it will take place at the intersection of Grand and Third. A couple will come up and swing around in the back, a few occasions.
So you saw that as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public for Mr. Siegel? Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
You're welcome.
So would you like to proceed, Mr. Leebly?
Thank you, this will be great.
Okay, great. Welcome back.
Thank you for having me here.
Can you search your ID? You swear upon your testimony that you are seeking to reveal the truth, the whole truth, and not the better truth?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Could you introduce?
Is Sharon Kringle, you need the address too?
Where do you live?
I live at 1003 Grand Avenue.
And when you say you live there, you own that property?
I do.
Okay.
Welcome back, Ms. Kringle.
Thank you.
When you were here during the original application, you indicated that you were a part-time resident there. Has that changed?
It has not.
Okay, and are you ever there on, are you ever there on weekdays?
I am.
Okay, so when school is in session?
Yes.
Okay, great. You have the copy of the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. The condition number seven relates to onsite parking spaces and onsite parking lot?
Yes.
Have you noted any irregularities in the use of the onsite parking lot?
Yes, a couple of times I saw that during school hours, the cars were not parked in the marked spaces, they were parked along the fence that divides our two properties, and I don't know why.
Okay. Let me just ask you, I have a picture here that you told me you took. Is that, is that the situation that you observed?
Yes.
When was that picture taken?
So, I don't remember exactly, but it was in the fall.
Okay.
This past fall, you're saying?
This past fall, yes, exactly.
Was it a school day?
It was a school day.
Okay. Can you give one of these to Mr. Harris?
Can we have that marked as well?
Yes.
I don't know where we are on the?
RC.
We'll mark this up. All right, this is an objective, right?
Yes.
RC.
RC.
Yeah, RC.
Okay, thank you. Condition number eight on the, on the resolution, I'm just going to read the first sentence, "All outdoor recreational activities for the school shall take place off-site of the school premises." Have you, have you noted any onsite recreational activities?
Yes, several times I have.
Can you describe that?
Yes, so the kids come outside for what I assume is recess, and they play not informal games, but just sort of informally running around.
And where are they playing?
So they're playing on the lawn of the church. There's a tree out there, they play around the tree, they play all over the lawn, but they often end up on the sidewalk and near the parking lot.
And is this every day, Ms. Kringle, or is this?
I can't say I'm not there every day, but a number of times that I have been able to be there on a school day, I have seen them do that, and, you know, they come kind of close to the street, so it's, you know, it's a little worrying.
And is there any staff member there to monitor this?
Yes.
So there's a staff member there that's monitoring recess every day? That's your, that's your best guess, right?
Yes.
And this is not a fenced-in area, correct?
Correct.
So I appreciate that.
Is this the grass area that you're talking about in this picture, just beyond the parking?
Yeah, with that big tree there, yeah, right around there, yeah.
Do they have, like, balls or anything, or are they just running around?
So occasionally, I've seen them with some stuff to play with, like a ball or something else, but often, they're just kind of running around.
I see. That's a little distressing.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. The, you also mentioned to me the condition of the ground there. Before the school took occupancy, was the front lawn grassy?
Yes.
And how would you describe it now?
And now it's dirt and mud.
Okay, thank you. Finally, number seventeen indicates that the applicant shall install a board on board fence along with the boundary line with your property. Has that occurred?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Leebly. Please stay seated, Ms. Kringle. Does anyone from the board have any question for Ms. Kringle? Have you personally observed in the mornings and the afternoons, the comings and goings of the buses and the cars and?
Yeah, occasionally, when I'm there.
And what is your opinion, Ms. Kringle?
So I just, I have to say that we did not know that there was a switch of where the buses and where the cars.
No, I was not aware of that myself, so.
Right, so we were surprised. So yes, I have seen buses idling on Grand Avenue when I thought it was the other way around, so we have seen that, you know, and kids getting on and off the buses. And I can't, you know, from where I am, I can't.
You can't see Grand?
I can't, I can't see Third, I see Grand.
Oh, you see Grand?
I can't see Third, although I can tell you that my neighbors on Third have complained to me often.
Yes, as hearsay, just what you observed, Ms. Kringle.
Yeah, no, I observed Grand.
And your opinion?
So I think that it is, you know, it works with the buses on Grand, I have to say. You know, I have seen kids get on and off, you know, I would have an opinion about the number of staff members that are helping with all of this, but, you know, the buses idling there.
But there is a staff member there from your observation?
Yeah, there is a staff member.
A staff member?
Yeah.
Okay.
Both on Grand and Third, or one staff?
So again, I don't see Third, you know, I'm usually in my home, and I, you know, I only see Grand.
Okay. I appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else, yes?
Weather condition, right now, we are in wintertime. Have you seen kids right now playing the grassy, muddy area lately?
I have seen them as recently as Thanksgiving week, so, you know, we were getting into winter.
And how long are they outside, a few minutes or?
No, I think that recess is, you know, twenty minutes, something like that, I want to say.
So they're outside for twenty minutes?
Twenty, twenty-five minutes, something like that, yeah. Yeah, I'm guessing, you know, I'm not sitting there with a watch, but, yeah.
In terms of the traffic, that's where the bus are operating, you know, so for a while there, you would see any issues with the house bus operating, drop off, correct?
Correct.
Ms. Kringle, would you feel that the situation would improve as a resident for all involved, not just the school, but for the people in the neighborhood, if there was a police officer out there?
So it's hard for me to say, not being on the side where the drop-off and pickup by the cars is happening. And I barely see the corner, I have to say, from where I am, but, you know, I think that supervised getting on and off the buses is, you know, what would help on Grand.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board, for Ms. Kringle? Board professionals? Anyone from the public for Ms. Kringle? Thank you, Mr. Leebling, thank you, Ms. Kringle.
Thank you.
So, I guess at this point, we're going to have to carry. What do we have on the twenty-fifth? We have two applications on the twenty-fifth right now? Oh. As long as we have enough... A full board, yes, the twenty-fifth would be fine. Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion to carry the charter school resolution compliance to February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, without further notice.
A second.
And do we have an agenda of what you're going to be presenting before that evening? I'll tell you what, I'm looking for the staff members that are dealing with the traffic out front and the students in both morning and pickup.
Yeah, we got it nailed down, how it's operating, whether or not any revisions have to be made, how to make it better. Obviously, the resolution is going to have to be revised, considering the officer, based upon the board's...
And as I stated to earlier, Mr. Karras, I'm going to want to review all the conditions. This is a meeting that has been long overdue for the charter school. And as we retain jurisdiction, I would like to review each one. Okay? It might be helpful. Since he's actually the one who made the changes to the conditions.
Yeah, he needs to step up a little bit. If he's going to make some official changes to this resolution, he needs to step up a little bit with that.
Yep, I agree.
We also need to determine what signage is there, what signage is not, who's responsible for that, how we get that created and in the ground, whether it's the Police Department or the city.
Yeah, it is the city, I can tell you, it is the city.
Whatever it is, we need to get that signage in there.
But you were supposed to review that, Mr. Karras, though. That was the responsibility of the charter school.
But it all went to the city, they said it was going there.
But it's still your responsibility to make sure that it was there. Agreed?
I will take a look to see what is there, but they did put in what they needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I think it's Mr. Karras again. It's time for three hundred and sixth Avenue. You will have your chance. You will definitely have your chance for comment, and it will be after all the witnesses are heard, Ms. Muddell, so...
Yes, we do encourage you to come back.
We encourage you to come back on the twenty-fifth of February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really? Sorry, I know we're sitting down, sorry. I'll talk to you about that later. I apologize, Mr. Siegel. You're on, Mr. Karras. Three hundred and sixth Avenue.
Andrew Karras from the front office, Rochelle, on behalf of the applicant. We're here to continue with the applications before the board, with regard to a two-unit residential building on three hundred and sixth Ave. We had submitted to the board based upon the comments that were presented last time, opinions, revised plans. These plans are dated January twelfth, two thousand twenty. We also have Mr. Savarese is back here to testify with regard to the revisions, so you can go right ahead.
Michael Savarese.
Arina, can you get this up on the board or not?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I will try, though. But I just don't have the rendering, so that you have.
Welcome back, Mr. Savarese.
We made certain revisions to the plans as a result of some of the comments that were made, some of the concerns that were made in the last year, am I correct? We have those revisions in front of us. What's the date of the revised plan? One twelve twenty. January twelfth, two thousand twenty, am I correct? Why don't we go through, why don't we mark that, then that's in the A sub, if we mark A six as the rendering?
Yes.
So, looking at the plans ASAP, right now it's ancient, we put that at the top, A eight, A ten, seven, eight? While we go through the revisions to the plans and how they change the capitalization.
Basically, after the second high meeting with the board, we incorporated more comments from the board and more comments from the professionals. We've lessened the density of the building down to be still two families, one of the two-bedroom on the second floor, and a two-bedroom, possible three-bedroom on third floor with a twenty percent penthouse. First over the building, there's parking, six, Web Street?
So, where was the parking before?
The parking was on Sixth Avenue. And now we've definitely split it to be parking on both sides of the building, so two car garages on Web Street. This level is one park, and this level, both above this second level. We've lessened, we've put it tremendously, we've listened to the comments received from the board, we're trying to get rid of the secondary stair in the back of the building. Therefore, it's to have garbage, trash bins behind, storage in the center of the run, and a second stair in the front. Parking is very simple. First floor apartment has two bedrooms, comes out, open door on the north, stair at the dead center, kitchen and bathroom. Second floor is basically the same footprint, kitchen's a little bit different, we've got the ceiling system up to the wall, eleven feet by twenty-one feet. The stairs are twenty percent natural, we have two bathrooms, one on both floors, one on the north side, one on the south side. The building's in keeping with our checkouts, requirements, suggestions from the zone. We believe it's a nice elevation. It has lines, has light, has dark, has mass, has the right percentages per your ordinance and per your planning guy. And has a pantry, outdoor, in the building, out of the car, out of the tailway, we've got garage, bathroom, four bedrooms. Pretty simple elevator building.
All right, going through the zoning chart, I just want to discuss before the board, how the variant, or how the chart has changed. The FAR had been the prior plan, one point oh five, at three thousand, three hundred and eighteen square feet, am I correct? And the revised plan drops all the way down to zero point seven L at two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six square feet. That is correct. Still requires the variance, however, you decrease the B relief substantially, correct? The side yard before, you had subsequent building, three-foot canopy, you've eliminated that canopy, so now you have a subsequent building, am I correct? You have the combined side yard before, fourteen point six, could be possibly revisions that you made, now it's at ten feet, am I correct? About as well. Percent building coverage, slightly it went down, was at thirty-four point nine four percent, now it's at thirty-four point seven four percent, am I correct?
That is correct.
Rear yard before was twenty-five feet to the building, it's still twenty-five feet to the building, but plus the rear balcony and on here, twenty-one feet to the balcony, am I correct?
What about those bathrooms on the second and third floor? The bathrooms on the second and third floor, correct?
Thank you.
Why don't we go through the height, what is the height now? Before the height was thirty-six point five feet, am I correct?
Correct.
What is it now?
Allowed to be thirty, it's thirty-nine in the penthouse roof.
But we don't count the penthouse roof in terms of the height, because we're allowed under code thirty-sixty-eight point three-three, it'd be two zones, it says, for a penthouse up to twelve feet, am I correct? As long as it's not more than twenty percent, correct?
That's how we what?
So, that's how we did the penthouse, am I correct, in accordance with the statute? Excluded, then the penthouse, what's the height level at? Thirty feet? Okay, and that's in compliance with statute, am I correct? Parking space, we have four, am I right?
That is correct.
The proposed floor, or before, we're at three thousand, three hundred and eighteen square feet, we dropped that all the way down to two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six square feet, am I correct?
That is correct. We have a first floor unit of nine hundred and eight square feet, and second floor unit nine hundred and eight square feet, plus the third floor with twenty square feet.
And lot coverage before is sixty-six point sixty-eight percent, and that's dropped all the way down to forty-eight point five seven percent, am I correct?
That is correct.
We found an opportunity to review the insight letter that was prepared, am I correct?
Yes, I have.
Why don't you want to have this marked?
Please.
Just go through some of the comments and then get better. With regard considerations, with connections, sanitary sewer, utility, that's all going to be required for the site.
Right, it's an epic site, so I'm assuming there's nothing there, there might be some old something from way back, well, it's all the connections.
Just so we're clear, now, because this is a two-family, it does not require a site plan, am I correct? Only variance review, under due orders, correct?
That's my understanding also.
And the utility connection, those requirements that be in the plans are under site plan, that's correct, not to check, is there variance relief?
Yes.
Any pavement repair within the adjacent roadway, utilize the infrared pavement, there's no issue with that. Same thing in terms of any soft cuts to the sidewalk here, no issue with that, am I correct? Going to the continuing comment relative to the DEP that we're complying, A six seven column thirteen. Do you want to talk about that?
We are now on full requirement, that's our first floor, actually starting, we just have access.
Stormwater management, again, it's not a requirement, variance review only for site maintenance, correct? The comment number nine with regards to driveways, it recognized that the plans have been revised, proposed two driveways on what, stairs are sixteen feet wide, am I correct?
That is correct.
And that's to accommodate the revisions in terms of the ingress, the ingress for the...
Six feet here, sixteen feet there, and fourteen feet three inches apart.
Number ten with regard to discussing features of centers, sewer connection fees up, and done, do you correct, correct? Twelve certification log changes in the board, that's not an issue. With regard to possible screening of refuse and any exterior mechanical equipment, now the refuse is already provided for inside.
It's already in the back, it's in the backside of the building, it will have screening on it, and it's not seen in either street.
What about exterior equipment, is that observable anywhere around there?
The refuse is in the back, and it does have a screen on it.
And what about mechanical equipment, gas meters and electric meters?
Our stuff right now is going through, and with the units.
Exterior lighting plan, in case that was not submitted, any lighting, though, is not going to spill off onto any...
We have lighting in the front entry, we have lighting in the stairwell, we have lighting in the outside door.
One of the comments was that the proposed plans are in direct conflict with the proposed driveway.
Yes, I think there's an erroneous note on the site plan that says, I just saw this morning, new concrete drive on Sixth Avenue, that is not there.
Is that going to be a side option?
There's a sidewalk there with a big rest to go on, outside from the sidewalk, back to go on to the front end. There's no entry there. So, you've looked at the examples, the rendering?
A six is the rendering that you prepared, am I correct?
You'll see that it's law and shrubbery part of the building.
The only access is from web, correct?
All right, taking a look at what we've marked as A six or identification. This is the rendering that you prepared relative to design this building. Why don't we go through some of the design elements in there and discuss that?
So, it's, the verticals are horizontal, they're in direct correlation to the period of the building going after it, art deco period. We have horizontal bands in the windows, we have a vertical accent in the stair tower. We purposely went in with the opaque type glass doors, it gives a feeling of the authenticity of this building. And it's, I think, it's very simple, elegant, elevation along both web and Sixth Avenue.
Just to clarify, Mr. Savarese, are these two-car garages for each apartment? So, you have parking for, each apartment has two parking spaces, two garage, a two-car garage?
Yeah, the first one is basically garages, entry, and garbage and storage.
Okay.
We've given up going after the backyard.
I understand.
And the parking that's made provided on-site complies with the requirement?
Yes, correct.
So, the questions, I have.
I have a question for Donna and you, kind of, so can I get you swaying?
Yes.
State your names and your affiliation with the city.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fitcher, board engineer.
Donna, can you just clarify your note in the planner's report, three point three, about the building design standards, and what the master plan says about this type of architecture? Just want to make sure I'm reading it right, the last sentence?
Last sentence of three point three, okay. Architectural design guidelines at section three point eight of the waterfront redevelopment plan directs developers to strictly adhere to a documented and substantiated stylistic format, and properly executing the Mediterranean revival, arts and crafts, and modern, such as art deco streamlined styles.
So, this is permitted?
This would be a sort of more modern take on the art deco, modern, streamlined style. So, the picture right under three point three is more of an art deco, not so much streamlined. I don't have a good one, I don't think there's one existing anymore in Asbury Park of streamlined. But if you think about a lot of the stuff that's on the strip in Miami Beach, that's, and I think this revised design scheme...
It does remind me of Miami Beach a little.
Yeah, exactly. And you might even, you know, think of a jukebox, that's kind of like streamlined, the kind of chrome, rounded Chrysler, top of the Chrysler Building. Those kinds of effects kind of remind of streamlined.
Actually, if you look at five fifty Covenant, that has art deco elements.
So, art deco. Does that mean it's permitted, though?
So, yeah, so, again, even in this, the D.L.A. Court buildings, the rounded second-floor portico with the railing, that's kind of a streamlined type element. So, again, it's kind of what's been going on with this. The first iteration had, you had the wood-clad balconies, that kind of didn't really, you know, contribute correctly to that style. This stucco and the railings now seem to fit more of that style. And again, we're not expecting them to, you know, exactly reproduce a nineteen thirties, you know, streamlined.
Is this in the waterfront redevelopment plan area?
Yeah, renovation infill.
Okay, and is it in the Sunset Historic Commission, or Historic Area? I can't remember where that is.
I don't think so, I don't think the line comes out to the front of Sixth.
I was going to ask why you chose this style.
I mean, to your point, I think maybe, though, other buildings in the neighborhood are not of that style. They're more of the traditional, what you expect, three-story quasi-Victorian, not the multi-families, you know, further up the street, but across the street on the north side of Sixth. There are some more traditional, you know, somewhat Victorian style.
Turn of the century colonials and...
Right, exactly. Craftsman elements, they might have Victorian elements, they might... Craftsman elements, they might have Victorian elements, they might have Queen Anne elements, whatever. So this is a significant departure from that, but it's still a permanent style.
Thank you. Second question, the balconies, is there a reason that they extend so far into the setback? Setbacks twenty feet.
They're very tiny balconies and therefore the look of the effect of the building. That's something you guys get outside. We're not talking about big balcony, they're four feet, not a big balcony.
Well, it is when your setback's supposed to be twenty feet on web.
Yeah, but it's twenty feet to the building. You know, when we look at the ordinance, we always look to the actual building that's there. I know we had this when we're talking about the project on a thousand grand where there's an issue as to whether or not it went to where the wall of the balcony was as opposed to the wall of the building, it was to the wall of the building as the ordinance shows.
We're also trying to give these units sort of out of remedial. That's up to that. And one of the, one of the chosen reasons to be with a rail and stuff of balcony is whoever is on the balcony, you know, they will cover the stuff of the wall. So you're going to have a seat or a ice box or a chair to be a hundred foot.
Is there a way to design the building so you aren't, well, what is the setback then? Because in our report, it's four feet. From what is more what I'm concerned about?
It's eight.
It's eight feet to the building.
Eight feet to the building.
So have you tried to design the building closer to that twenty foot?
If you look at the plan, it's only, we can't make these units any smaller. We can take the balconies off, but I think that's a design element, that's an element to have these units have someone to watch them, to feature these units. But this, this building is only twenty feet. Why we make it any narrower, we can't get two bedrooms in, it just doesn't, doesn't work.
Well, I think the overall situation is you're dealing with an undersized lot, correct, Mr. Severies? So I kind of, I understand and don't understand what you're saying at the same time. So you're dealing with an undersized lot that you're putting a fairly oversized building on. So I appreciate that you've downsized, that you and your applicant have downsized the overall dimensions of those particular apartments. But in essence, you're still putting a lot in that five pound bag.
You know, when you look at the living here, twenty-four hundred sixty-six square feet, is that overbuilding on a lot?
Well, you're over the FAR though, so.
It's a small lot.
That's compensated in this.
It's a small lot. It's a small lot.
Yeah.
It is. But it's a lot that is, as far as from a developer, I'm a developer, I'm a writer, I'm a part of the community. This piece of this parcel does not make sense to build as it will be on the house.
I don't know if that I agree with that.
Why would you say that?
I'm just saying from a financial point of view.
But you know that finances have nothing to do with. With the zoning board.
I understand.
Well, we're going to have a planner, we're not ready tonight with the planner until we can just work out some of the kinds of plans. We'll have a planner coming to testify as to the FAR, the density and support.
So I, like I said, I appreciate that we've gone smaller, but I still feel that somehow we're kind of jamming a lot in that little thirty-five hundred square feet.
I mean, on one hand, you could think of, well, you know, as Mr. Severies was saying, the building's only twenty feet wide. A townhouse is twenty to twenty-four feet wide. It's not, you know, unrealistic form for the amount of area. But to your points as well, it's not just one story that's twenty feet wide. There's a lot more mass associated with that twenty foot wide building.
Which is really where I'm going with it then.
And I think that's the concern, yeah.
But there's also a mass to the buildings that are behind it, you know, one story buildings have.
Personally, I like your design. I like the art deco kind of features and it's not about that. It's.
I also believe somebody's Victorian building behind the building wraps it big enough. More mass, more height, using the big gable roofs. I honestly don't feel, I kind of don't think it's a nice corner because I kind of liked the way this building wraps it out. And I don't think the building is overpowering on a second.
It's a corner lot, it's a visible lot. I think it makes a beautiful visual impact over there, what now is a vacant lot.
Oh, I can't disagree that it would be better than having a vacant lot. But I also want to make sure that it's an appropriate structure for the vacant lot. And I don't know that the board agrees with me, but personally, I would still downsize it somewhat.
In terms of the size of the building, the balcony?
Well, you've got, you're asking for four stories, which, you know, we're already saying you're.
Well, it's three stories you're allowed to have. We're not, we're not above what we're.
Well, you are. You're opposing how tall the building?
But when you look under the ordinance, it's a B two zone, so you can go to thirty feet plus you get to add on up to twelve feet.
I don't think so. Did you say B two?
Isn't it? What is this?
This is R two.
I'm sorry.
But I keep getting tripped up too because I'm doing so many ordinance revisions right now for the master plan and everything's coming out.
I'm with you, Donna, I'm with you.
The catcat is actually hidden or a tower, it's all right directly behind the tower. So it's really nice.
So, but it's a two and a half story zone. So your, your overall stories, because it's at least three stories, and your overall height in feet.
To get parking.
And I understand, and you have a, and you have a really good reason for some of your height with the flood elevation. You know, that's contributing factor. But again, I think the feeling is that on thirty-five hundred square feet, that mass feels like too much. But again, it's a form thing, and I agree, the stuff in the neighborhood is pretty massive as well. But it's small, it's existing.
So what I'm trying to understand, when you talk about mass, how you're defining the mass of the building? Are you talking about the height? Are you talking about the balconies that are added onto the building or the actual envelope of the building itself?
All of the above.
Yes.
Especially that, that front yard setback. Four feet, that's horrible.
Yes. No. So then again, from the web, you're talking about the web street side because it's a narrow street and it's a narrow, you feel the height of the structure even more with it being that close.
Yes, thank you, that's a better way to say it. Also, the flood zone, you mentioned that you elevate it for, for the BFE, is that?
Yes.
And there's no livable space down there?
I think originally there was a foyer down there or something or.
Originally there was a unit.
A unit.
Right at the BFE, but last time we raised it, it could be right above the BFE.
Right.
And we pulled it out altogether.
So it's in compliance now with?
Well, that's for the building official to determine, but they will very likely have a ground floor elevation that conforms. I mean, it's within, the way it's currently designed on the plan, I think it's within six inches.
A DEP permit would be required for that, nonetheless.
That's what I thought.
But I mean, for your jurisdiction.
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
The other thing I was going to ask, and I apologize if I said this in the last meeting, what was the reasoning for not having any access to the front off of Sixth?
I think basically what's simplified is putting the parking, that's why they give the parking.
What about a front door though?
Front door is now on the side.
It may land as a unit and a unit and a tower.
Yeah, but you actually have a door on the, on the rear yard side coming off that back garage. I mean, there would still be a symmetry in sense.
We could put a door there, I didn't think it makes sense to put a door on Sixth. I have no objection to.
It'd be backwards then, going.
We could put a door here or there. We just didn't think of that as a report because I figured you were saying that we're trying to use it as future living space. So I don't want to broach that subject.
I mean, we had some, Michael and I at my office had some suggestions about, you know, making the Sixth Ave facade a little more friendly. But, you know, I don't want to design the guy's building. But, you know, if there's a bigger concern about mass, the overall size, the height, if there are other problems, you know, we'll reserve that conversation.
Well, I feel that the board is kind of agreeing with some of my comments, so I, I think we might, you know.
I think it's a really attractive building.
I do as well.
The problem you have is this, it's just not, when you look at, in order to do a two-family house on this, one family just isn't practical to do on this site. Let me finish. If you're going to do a two-family house, you have to provide in a square footage to make it a feasible property. Twenty-four hundred sixty-six square feet is not a reason.
But you're talking from a financial aspect, but you say feasible. I don't understand why, if you say feasible.
I would, I'd rather say logical, from a logical standpoint, one, one family house, when you look at the surrounding area, is really not fit here. And we'll provide testimony to support that. It doesn't fit on a corner lot with what is around in this particular area. It warrants really a two-family house. And if you're going to do a two-family house, to do it at any size less than what is being proposed in terms of unit size, it's just, when I say feasible, it's not logical. You know, if you're going to have a two-family house, especially when you're by the beach, you hear down in Asbury Park, you want some outside area to be able to enjoy. That's the nature of coming down, you need some space to be able to live. What is being requested is not, is not out of control, it's not beyond what is logical and reasonable for this site in order to do a two-family house.
I don't disagree with you. However, I don't believe it's necessarily our job to be going so far out of our realm of responsibility here. I keep saying this frequently right now, we always have to remember that we're the zoning board of adjustments. We're here to adjust hardships. And what you're asking us to do, I feel is almost out of our realm of responsibility. This is asking a lot of this particular board based on what our responsibilities are.
And FAR point seven, really isn't a lot.
I do believe however, your planner is going to help your argument a lot. And I think if you can lay out the surrounding area, that is going to help your argument a lot. But looking at this.
Isolating the building without context of anything around it, I agree. You've got to look at the context of where that is.
I agree, I think that for me personally, I want to hear that argument. I want to be able to see what's going on around here because there's a lot going on. You have a very, you have a small lot, you're trying to do a lot on. And I think your planner is going to, is going to help a lot. I don't know if it's going to take it all the way there, but I do believe that that's a good move on your, on your part. I can only echo the same sentiment. So with that, how would you like to proceed?
Let's get another date, let's come back. I'm here on the twenty fifth, so.
All right, so I'll make a motion to carry three hundred and sixth Avenue to February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. I. No, but I imagine Mr. Severies is going to come back again, or are we done with? Oh, well then maybe we should go on with.
I mean, if they're not going to change the plans materially between now and then, he's given a good overview of what's changed since their last presentation. It might be beneficial to at least get the cross of him out of the way.
If you agree, Mr. Karas, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, there probably going to be slight modifications to it, but that's fine, it's board discretion.
Um.
Board discretion.
All right, I think that's fine, appropriately. So let's have, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Severies or professionals? Anyone in the public have any questions for Mr. Severies?
Okay, can I go from the back?
Of course. State your name and.
Ernest, we know only four hundred D L A Drive on Asbury Park. So I can ask of the architect?
Architect.
Only?
Only.
Okay. I think we're coming back on the twenty-fifth for slight changes, is that why we're coming back?
Oh, we're coming back on the twenty-fifth for a lot of things, but.
Okay, because I'm just going by what the attorney said, maybe we'll make some slight changes. So I'm asking the architect, is that what you're planning to come back with, slight changes or?
I think they're planning to come back with a planner to give further testimony about.
Okay, relative to the concerns of the board, the size, the, a lot of the things. They said there was, a lot of things are kind of problematic. I think it was squeezing a big building onto a small lot, so somehow you're going to address that.
I think we have addressed that already.
We're going to come back with a revised plan.
We're likely to.
What I'm asking.
You're asking what is going to address, that's not, you're asking about the plans already, not about the whole venue.
Okay. Are you, are you going to modify that plan?
I don't know yet.
Oh, you don't know, okay, so that's an answer, how's that?
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Severies?
Yes, hello, Warner Baumgartner, city historian. Where did you get guidance to design the architecture of this art deco style?
From the city planner.
From the city planner. What documentation was provided to you?
Your master plan.
Are there architectural standards in the master plan?
When you're in the zone, there are.
When you're what?
There's certain, there's certain criteria you're supposed to meet according to the zone.
What zone is this?
This is a business zone and, no, sorry, it's R two, R two zone.
It's an R two zone?
Yes.
Okay. Why are you applying the waterfront redevelopment standards in an R two zone?
As per the review of this board, we were told that we need to meet that criteria. And as far our review, we looked at what all is on this, we had to meet the criteria.
The board told you?
Our review and the board, correct.
Okay, did you, so it's your belief going through this entire project that in an R two zone, the waterfront redevelopment architectural standards apply? Is that what you're testifying to?
This, this practice site falls within the redevelopment zone.
That's your belief?
That's my belief.
It's the infill, is that correct?
Renovation infill, yes.
Yes.
Is that a zone? Is that a legally defined zone? What does that mean, renovation infill?
It's part of the redevelopment, it was part of the development.
Part of the plan? I didn't ask that, I asked, is that a legally defined zone, the infill area?
So R two zone.
It's an R two zone.
Do you want me to answer, if R two is part of the waterfront infill, is that an infill area?
All right, I'm not understanding your terminology then, or maybe you're not understanding mine. What is the legal zoning that this is in, the official zone?
That's more for the planner, I think that.
I would ask your board that question.
Well, it's on your document, you have it listed as zone for.
R two is already there.
R two, okay.
You've said it three times already.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm continuing to ask, what makes you believe that the waterfront redevelopment standards apply in an R two zone?
In my professional opinion, in any documentation that one is put out and this town is put out, I believe it's in that zone. If you can prove otherwise, please let us know.
Okay, do you believe this is in a redevelopment area?
I just said that.
No, you didn't. You said it's in the infill area. Is this a redevelopment area?
It's within the waterfront redevelopment zone, the plan, the infill section of the waterfront redevelopment.
Okay, you're going to stick with that, okay. Did you go before the technical, did you go before the technical review committee before appearing here?
You don't have to because you're not part of the waterfront area within the infill, infill zone.
And what is the difference between the waterfront area and the infill zone? What is the legal difference?
Some of the difference is that we're within.
Mr. Baumgartner, can I just interrupt you for one second? Donna, could you just give a quick explanation of what the infill area is versus the R two versus?
So there's, we've had this discussion before.
Yes, we have.
Mr. Baumgartner has an opinion about.
Can you hear your opinions?
Mr. Baumgartner has an opinion about the validity of the application of the district, the boundaries, the application of the redevelopment designation on these lands. The zoning map of the city says this lot falls within. on these lands. The zoning map of the city says this lot falls within the renovation infill area related to the waterfront redevelopment plan. There's language within the waterfront redevelopment plan that talks about the renovation infill area, and that it's loosely described as being governed by the zoning ordinance, but also subject to these other parameters of the waterfront redevelopment plan. So that's how we apply the different standards, the architectural guidelines, the.
And in all these cases, they, these applications appear before the zoning board?
No, they don't have to, in this case, because they need an FAR variance, that's why they're here.
Okay.
If they didn't need an FAR variance, well, then they wouldn't be anywhere. They would just get a bill from it.
Right, right, right. So my point is.
But generally, yeah, you could be, you would be in front of the planning board. You wouldn't go to the technical review committee. You wouldn't be a redeveloper. You would just be an applicant in this underlying zone with this waterfront renovation infill overlay affecting your development. I mean, Mr. Karras, do you have?
Does that clarify your questions, Mr. Baumgartner?
And so, and that's how you guys have handled, as a board, have handled previous applications, for example, 301st, similar? Or, I'm sorry, not 301st, because that was outside. Let me see, there was another one. I can't think of it off my, I can't think of it now, but.
No, we've had other infill applications.
So that is the board protocol, that's the procedure, that's the way it's been done. Mr. Serpico has had conversations with Mr. Baumgartner in the past about this topic, but we apparently are at an impasse at acceptance.
Chairman, you asked me if I'm satisfied with that?
I'm just asking if you, does that clarify the situation at all?
All I can determine is that there has been a gross misinterpretation of applying the redevelopment plan versus local zoning versus the boundaries that are described. This has never, never been done like this before, that a modernistic Art Deco building would be permitted in a historic R2 district. The community design regulations have always, for decades, been the governing regulations, because this is not in the waterfront redevelopment area. This is. And that, and I'm going to pursue that in other, in other venues. You have me at a disadvantage. I'm supposed to be questioning the witness.
Exactly.
But I'm having a dialogue, which is probably inappropriate, but you started it, so there you go.
I was just trying to clarify.
I understand, and I'm trying, I'm trying to clarify my point on this, in that I've, I was part, I was an integral participant in crafting.
You can make these comments at the end, Mr. Baumgartner.
The waterfront redevelopment plan. And I think I might be in a slightly better position to understand how it was supposed to be applied. Okay.
Again.
So, questions? I'm going to ask a few questions then. Let's see. Are there any traditional front porches included on this design?
There are bathrooms, there are bathrooms, there are more bathrooms, there are no traditional.
No traditional front porches, okay. Is there a traditional gable roof?
There is not, it's purposely designed and styled.
Okay. Is there any turret or chimney?
You can look at the plans.
I want to, I'd like it on the record.
You're going through what you think are the criteria. You've heard what we've.
I'm entitled to put that on the record, thank you. Is there a ruling on that? He's objecting to my questions.
I'm objecting, that's wasting time.
No, it's not wasting time. It's putting it on the record.
Ask you a question, yes, there is an entry, however, we decided on modern art decoration.
Are there any other buildings within sight of this location that have this style?
I would say yes.
Which ones? Within sight, within visual sight lines of this block?
I'm not able to give an answer tonight, but in a lot of research, it shows that there are buildings that are within walking distance or able sight of this private, sure.
What is the architectural style directly across the street of the majority of those buildings?
I can't say across the street. I can say behind this building, Victoria.
I asked across the street.
Recollecting from memory, without expecting to ask this question. So from my memory, I'm telling you that the buildings behind this, all of Victoria, the buildings to the south of this building are stucco nondescript seventies architecture.
Okay, all right. So you have not applied any of the criteria under the zoning regulations?
He's assumed that is.
I'm asking, have you, have you, have you?
My understanding of the infill zone, I applied all of the criteria that.
I'm asking a specific question for the record. Have you applied any of the Section 30-69 Community Design Regulations to this project?
Again, I want to state that I have applied the infill recommendations in your master plan that says that Art Deco buildings are preferred style.
That's not my question. I'm asking, once again, Chair, could you ask him to just answer the question?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Anyone else from the public?
Can I ask a question?
Can we ask questions?
Mr. Manoli, I thought you already were up. Do you have a quick question?
I do, very quickly.
Okay.
Actually, it's just one question. Ernest Manoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive. So it's for the architect. While you were explaining where you got the motif in the design, you referenced the planner, and you say you got the idea. However, the planner was shaking her head no. So what is it, no or yes?
Again.
Did you get it from the planner or not?
Did not get it from the planner. We got.
Okay, thank you. You didn't get it from the planner.
There's a planner report identifying this type of style.
Yes, it does.
And it does identify this.
That's not my question. My question is, you stated you got it from the planner, and the planner shook her head no. So the question is, did you or did you not get it from the planner?
The review of our plan, the planner did say that our style was in keeping with the zone. It had all the suggestions of what to be done on this site.
Okay, but.
This report is out.
But just so, you know, when you said that, you shook her head no. So I don't know if no means no, but that's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Manoli.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public for Mr. Savarys and his testimony? Thank you, Mr. Savarys. Yes, Mr. Karras. I will now make a motion to carry the 306th Avenue application to February 25th, 2020 without further notice.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will make a motion to take a five or 10-minute recess.
I'll second.
Yes, here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Brittany Anderson.
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Here.
Tempslick.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Christopher Adala.
I'm still here. All right. Paul and Thomas Egan, 507 Bond Street. Mr. Rehachek, is that correct?
Oh, you pronounce it terrific. Yes. You must have been to Czech Republic. It's John Rehachek, Haplet Rehachek, Hall, New Jersey. Just as an introduction, the professionals we have here, we have Allison Coffin, is going to be the cleanup hitter as a professional planner. Dario Patswall is here, the architect, and Mr. Edward T. Betts, professional engineer. He's subbing in for Mr. Caruso, another obligation in another town, and he'll address anything that deals with the, with the plan. The plan needs tweaking here and there as part of the engineering review of the city of Asbury Park.
Well, welcome everyone, and let's get started.
I'm going to start with Mr. Paul Egan. He owns the property. Last 20 years, and he'll, he'll address what the overall plan has scored this. It's a rehab of a former building.
Yes.
Yes, I do. Paul F. Egan.
Mr. Egan.
Mr. Rehachek, hold on a second. Just for the record, I just wanted to make a point.
We have jurisdiction?
I have reviewed the notes and everything's satisfactory.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Beekman. Mr. Rehachek, your turn.
Yeah, Mr. Egan, Paul, how long have you owned this property?
20 years now.
And when you bought the property, well, why don't you go to the board? You can show, I think, I think that's, that's what they can show is how the property is just right now.
This is the property, 507 Bond. As you can see, it's, we bought it 20 years ago. It was in fairly good condition. The glass is fine, the building looks respectable. Over the last 20 years, the solarian glass is now starting to fail, and it's.
This is the way the building looked 20 years ago?
No, no, it's just what it looks like today.
Right, right.
Purchased, it was much nicer, okay? Glass was good, the building looked nice. Over the last 20 years, this glass is starting to.
No, but I mean, the overall design of the building was like this, initially, 20 years ago.
That building, it never touched the design.
Okay.
And what is your proposal for this building?
All right, well, what it is, it's, my brother and I purchased this building, and now it needs some renovation work, okay? So what we needed to do was come up with a design and possibly make the property more accessible. The problem with this property right now is that the entrance to the second floor apartment is down this alleyway on the right-hand side. Okay, it's dangerous, it's kind of narrow, and it's very inconvenient.
We have to mark that photograph. There's two photographs of the alleyway.
Yes, there is.
Okay, we have to mark this, because they're not part of the original plan.
Oh, okay.
So this is part, you did the marking?
Yes.
So can we back up a little bit? 20 years ago, you purchased this product, this property, Mr. Egan. And at that time, what was the title transfer stating on this property?
I purchased a three-family property that had three separate apartments, it had three separate meters.
That's not what I asked you. What was the title transfer of this property?
What was the title transfer of the property?
Fee simple.
Fee simple.
It's what?
Fee simple?
No, no, that's not what I mean. What was the transfer? You and your brother, I guess, signed a transfer title?
I can't remember. I'll be perfectly honest with you. I cannot remember what we signed 20 years ago.
Okay. Then perhaps Donna can illuminate us what the property was listed as?
Okay, the prior zoning was 1989. There's a prior resolution where it was split zone, office on the bottom, office retail on the bottom, residential on the second and.
So it was a single family with an office, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That was my question, Mr. Egan. That was your transfer title?
Okay, very good. All right. When we went and took a look at the property, we assumed it was a three-family, okay? It was split up as three separate units, had people living in the apartment. As people moved in, out of the building, and out, I got COs through the town, through the housing department.
You're telling me when you purchased the property, there were, it was being used currently as a three-family, when you purchased it 20 years ago?
There was a family living on the second floor, second and third floor. There was an apartment on the left side that was, that was just, people just moved out, and there was apartment on the right side.
But yet you signed the transfer title that specifically stated it as a single family with an office?
It's very possible that's what I signed, yes.
Do you understand that you were basically violating the zoning of that building right from the start?
I did not know that. I did not know that, sir.
But you signed a document that specifically stated that?
If that's what you're saying, I did. I'll have to, I don't remember what I signed 20 years ago.
Please proceed.
All right. The property has been managed since the day we purchased it as a three-family. It had three electrical meters, it had three gas meters, it had three apartments, it had three bathrooms, it had three hot water heaters. The downstairs apartments had a single bedroom on, for the left side, and on the right side was two very small bedrooms on the right side. The third floor, second and third floor, had a family living up there utilizing that as a three-bedroom. As the apartments were rented, I went down to zoning, I went down to building apartment and filled out for COs. I have copies of COs with me now. As people move in and out, I got a CO for each apartment, never having a problem with a zoning problem. It was never brought up.
So you received a CO for a three-family. They say each apartment was?
I received a CO for a three-family. When I went to purchase this property, they wrote it up, the building apartment, the housing apartment came down, wrote it up as a three-family building. That's what I remember signing.
Michelle, could you swear in both the board professionals?
Do you swear on ground testimony here during this specific, will you be the truth, tell the truth, or nothing, be the truth?
I do.
State your names and your affiliations.
Don Miller, board planner.
Jason Fisher, board engineer.
Thank you.
We do have, we do have copies of the original COs, which we'll give to Mrs. Farron, so she can mark them as exhibits.
The board has copies?
Oh, they do, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I know, based on what I'm hearing, your conversation with the applicant. I mean, technically, they're applying for use variance. There is a certificate of zoning compliance on file issued to Paul and Thomas Egan by the city in May of 2000 that says the property is approved to be used as a first-floor office, second-floor residential apartment. That it had, it received pre-existing non-conforming use status that was related to a prior zoning board approval. I don't know why Mr. Egan claims to not know about this, or that the city building department acted in whatever way that it did to not honor the certificate and issue instead COs for apartments that were not permitted. But he's not here for, you know, under a certificate of conformance. He's here to prove a use variance tonight.
I understand that, but I needed to have some history.
Yeah.
Before we proceed and say, you purchased a three-family, you really did not purchase a three-family. You purchased a single family with an office.
And for the record, I was the zoning officer for the city in the 80s, and I issued the original zoning permit.
Okay. Prior to the purchasing of property, I went out with one of the housing inspectors of the property, and we went through the building, and he wrote it up as a three-family unit, all right? And on each of those COs that I have there, where it says on the building or the number of units, it says three, and which building I got a CO for. And I did that before I purchased the property. It's in there somewhere. And I understand the letter that I got from you, which I just recently received a copy of. I don't remember that 20 years ago. I'm telling you the truth. So you're telling me I purchased a property that is commercial downstairs and residential upstairs?
No, we're saying it was never approved to be changed from commercial downstairs.
Yes, I understand, I understand that now. I do understand that. I'm not, I can't debate that. I understand that now that I started this process. And this all came up when we decided to renovate the building.
I understand that.
That's where this all came up, okay?
But for the board's clarification, Mr. Egan. They have to understand, first, first, what's involved with the zoning. And while you may talk about it as a three-family, particularly never been approved for a three-family. So I am not trying to penalize you for that. I'm trying to explain to you that the board needs to understand every aspect before we make any decision at all.
Okay. Just one thing, one of the COs that are up there, it does say number of units in the building, it does say three, and that's what, what I was going, going by. Didn't understand that it was a commercial building and a single.
Family.
Back then. I do understand it now.
I'm going to have to take your word for that, Mr. Egan. I have to say, since you've signed documents that specifically stated it as something else, you're a little suspect in your testimony.
Well, also the reason we're here is to ask for the use variance picture of the building.
And I understand that. And that's why originally, when you presented us this application, I sent it back because it was actually changing from a single family to a three-family, which, you know, encompasses a lot of things for us. When you go from a single family to a three- When you go from a single family to a three-family, you're talking about increased density, you're talking about increased parking requirements. There's a lot of things that go along with that, that have to be addressed. So I, I'm just making you understand the process that's involved.
I understand this is going to be a process, yes.
Thank you. If he's, if he's well aware, he's, we'll do everything possible if it's granted to, uh, to meet all the requirements that the board wishes.
I see that you do have COs that were granted, granted in, in twenty sixteen. Are there, are there still renters in, in these three units?
Yes. Oh, no, uh, just two. The upstairs, the, the top floor is vacant.
Okay, so, but the, the property in its current state has its three units still intact. You haven't done any renovate, major renovations since you bought it twenty years ago.
No.
It's generally in the same condition.
Well, I mean, of course, as, you know, the new toilet has to be.
No, I'm just talking about three units.
Yes.
You haven't moved any walls or, or anything, so it's still in that state.
Never put the door or a wall or set of stairs or a hot water heater besides replacing.
Okay.
Okay.
Please proceed.
So the purpose we're here is not only the use variance, but also to, uh, to change the building to make it safer, more aesthetically compatible with the neighborhood. And, uh, the planner will address the issue as to the use variance, as to the historical development, and it's, this building's compatibility, and what we're going to do to make it more pleasing within that, that zone. It is an R1 zone, which we do understand residential zone, and there's two residential uses on either side of us, but in the, uh, the overall zone, even the city planner noted that it's, it's mixed. It's a mixed, mixed uses. If you would go back, uh, explain the, uh, first exhibit, one of the major changes that we're seeking is on A1 and A2. Could you explain that to the board, what they're looking at there, uh, and where is that relationship to the, the building we're talking about?
All right, well, A2 here is the alleyway to access the second-floor apartment entrance wide. And it's down a narrow alleyway, approximately five or six feet wide, and the door is at the back of the alleyway, so it makes it inconvenient. It's a little creepy and it's, it's, uh, it's not the, it's not the best way to enter, uh, an apartment.
Now, that's for the second floor, just for the board understanding.
It's for the exit floor.
And, and how steep is the stairs, uh?
The stairs? I would imagine, it, it's three steps. I mean, the risers are probably around eighteen, it's a 10 inches. It's not that.
Is there any other entrance right into, into the second floor, is that?
No, this is the only entrance, entrance.
And A1 is what?
A1 is the entrance to the second floor at the back of the alleyway.
And that's the same as the photos, A1 pretty much. It's a better photograph of it.
That's that.
And to get up to the second floor, you have to use this door and the stairs?
The stairway is inside the building and it accesses the second.
Oh, yes. Now, the original photograph, the alleyway you're talking about in A1 and A2, can you just show that to the board where that's located?
It's located on the left-hand side of the building.
And next door to you is a residential use also. Is that occupied or what's going on with that property?
This property on my left-hand side is being renovated right now, so it is not occupied.
Okay. And what is your, what is your intention to how you're going to change this building? You hired an architect. What exactly are you going to do?
Well, we own a lot next door to the right-hand side, and it's a parking lot. It's not laid out as a parking lot, so we're looking to have it, uh, laid out as a parking lot.
And what will that support? Will that support this building we're talking about?
That, uh, should support. That's what is going to support this building, apartments for this building.
Now, can you show the architectural rendering as to what, uh, what's going to be the changes to this, uh, structure?
Okay, first of all, we're going to get rid of the solarian glass, okay? We're going to clean the building up. And, uh, we wanted to move the stairs from the left-hand side to the right-hand side so it's more accessible, safer. And, uh, we came up with a design, uh, for a cleaner, uh, building with the stairs on the right-hand side, more accessible to the second-floor apartment, uh, and with a, a nicer aesthetic look as well.
Now, with this architectural rendering, they're not showing the building that's right next to it. It, it was just how the architectural rendering was made.
Yes.
Right. And in that, in that, uh, architectural rendering, there is a building next to it and a building behind it.
Yes.
And how big is this other lot that you have that you propose to park?
The lot size?
Yes, yes.
Fifty? Is it fifty by hundred percent? Fifty by hundred.
And what other changes will you be making to this building?
What other changes? Um, uh, we're going to replace the windows, uh, upgrade the heating systems, um, with more doors.
Are you going to change any, uh, walls outside the building?
Uh, no, uh, we're not adding any square footage. We're not adding any bedrooms. We're not, uh, adding any bathrooms. Everything, uh, is going to stay, stay in action.
Now, the alleyway door, is that going to be blocked, blocked up?
That'll be closed off, yes.
And, uh, this, this shielded, uh, type staircase, will this meet fire codes?
Yes, it will. It's, it's, it's four foot wide staircase and it, and meets fire codes, yes.
Now, the other thing, uh, who's going to live in the second floor?
Yes, it's going to be my primary residence, uh, the second and third floor of this building.
And, and you and your brother have owned other properties in that area?
Yes, yes.
City of Ashbury Park?
Yes.
But you plan to make this residence your home?
Yes.
Okay. And you're asking, are you asking the board, it's going to be part of testimony, we're seeking the use variance to make legal what you purchased?
Yes.
My next, uh, I do have Mr. Dario Pasquale, Pescarella, he's here. He's the architect.
We, we have to stick with Mr. Egan first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I rushed it a little bit. Okay.
So. Does anybody on the board have any further questions for Mr. Egan? Board professionals? Anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Egan? Thank you, Mr. Egan. Now we can proceed, Mr. Rijkaard.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pescarella, Dario Pescarella, he was the architect on the plan. Could you explain, uh?
Please, Warren.
Get a couple, yes.
Do you swear upon testimony here during these proceedings to believe the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record?
Dario Pescarella.
Can you spell it?
And you're a licensed, uh, architect?
Licensed architect. Yours in New York.
And, uh, free thumbnail of your education and experience?
I've been a licensed architect for, own my own firm for ten years, um, masters of architecture from Anjetti.
And, uh, were, were you the architect on, uh, the exterior of the building?
Yes, I was.
And to your knowledge, any interior changes or just the exterior?
Really just the exterior, interior minor changes to, uh, you know, obviously with the glass, all those become real walls and windows, or natural light, those bedrooms.
And the staircase, can you explain?
Staircase is a major change. I mean, the staircase that's there now, the rise-to-run is pretty much code compliant, but the landing depth is not when you reach the top of the stairs. Also, it's not really advisable to have a staircase in between two units for fire rating. So it's nice to have on the exterior, safer to be addressed.
So this staircase, you were describing the interior staircase?
Correct, the old.
Old staircase is, and you, in your opinion, is that a hazard?
Yes.
And hazard for what reason?
Hazard, even the top of the stairs is not a real landing. There's groceries, anything like that. They're trying to access the phone routines. It's just not as comfortable accessible.
And how does this comply with fire safety?
Fire safety now, um, your, your staircase is, the backside of staircase is the other unit, so the fire rate's not really, uh, the best, uh, condition.
I believe the city engineer, uh, was talking about a lighting plan. Have you ever working on a lighting plan?
Um, that will be excess, that's interior, that's not, we're interior.
Okay. We're going to have questions.
You're not doing, I'm sorry, you're not doing, uh, any interior work. For the most part, it's mostly exterior.
Mostly exterior, except for, like I said, with the solarium, um, those become real walls, so different windows, you know, some of that stuff is just really renovation line. But the layout is, is pretty much what's there now.
Aren't you taking out a staircase, though?
The staircase, the interior staircase, interior, I mean, to the, to the left unit is where that access point is now to the second floor. That'll be removed. And that, that's being removed to the right-hand side of the building.
And, and the door, the alleyway, will that be blocked up?
Yes.
Be blocked?
You've prepared the architectural drawings for this. There's not a first floor depicted on here, is, is there a first?
Yes, there's a first floor.
Why am I missing it? I see.
First floor should be on A2. It's a ground floor round level plan. It says apartment one A, apartment one B.
For some reason, the electronic version doesn't have the bedrooms in there, so, but the printed version does. This is two apartments, okay?
Two, one bedroom apartment.
And one with a tenant.
Thank you.
No further questions?
Uh, any questions for Mr. Dario? No? Thank you, Mr. Oh, any board, the board professionals, any questions? Any questions from the general public for Mr. Dario? Please come up. Yep, yep.
Hi, Ernest McGully, wanted to deal with a drug. I don't have to swear in doing it.
No, no, it's just questions for Mr. Dario.
What?
It's just.
Not with questions.
Okay, so, uh, I can ask the architect, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to install a fire escape?
No, no fire escape.
Oh, no fire escape?
I thought, no?
Well, the exterior, the new exterior staircase will be fire compliant.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, um, uh, that's, that's my question. I, I know that you talked about a fire escape, but I didn't realize it's going to be the stairwell fire compliant, which takes care of that.
Right, may I ask?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public, from Mr. Dario? Thank you.
My, my next expert is Edward T. Betts, uh, professional engineer. Please, Warren.
Do you swear upon the testimony here during these proceedings to believe the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record?
Edward Betts.
What are your last names?
B for boy, E-T-Z.
Thank you.
Could we have your credentials, Mr. Betts?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since nineteen eighty-five, and I have my own firm, Edward Betts PD.
And I think we have to back up and ask for Mr. Dario's credentials. We did not do that.
Oh, he did, he did.
Oh, we didn't?
Uh, and I say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and you, you hold a bachelor's and a master's in engineering from Cornell University, is that correct?
I do, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, you also sat on the How Town Chaklani Board gearing scale?
Yes, yes, I was on the other side of the dais.
Now, you're, you're sitting in for Mr. Caruso and you're here to answer any questions as to the master of the engineering, uh, request. There's certain, certain waivers that Mr. Caruso thought would be appropriate. Do you wish to address this?
Number of waivers, uh, some of them technical, having to do with the drawings. Uh, we would be asking for temporary waivers, uh, so that we could, here with the board recommends to make some changes to our drawing, and then the temporary waivers that we ask for today would also be incorporated with the final of the drawings. I can.
Well, you're also putting in a parking lot, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and that's going to involve a lot as well, so.
Would you prefer we talk the site plan first, then Edward?
Well.
We, we can address the store water runoff. There was a question about that.
So that, that's, that's where I'm going with this.
No problem.
A, as you're moving into a parking lot and putting concrete down, I assume, right?
Correct.
Um, you're going to have a lot of impervious area, and, and store water management is another issue, so.
The site plan, I don't know, we can all.
We, we have come up with a solution for that, which we hopefully trust the board, because, we do understand that keep the water on site.
The, uh, the current use, or the current allowed use is a business on the first floor. There is a good portion of the lot, um, we'll get the drawing up, I'd be glad to show you, that used to be a parking lot, has two curb cuts, one onto Monroe and one onto, uh, Bond. And that, what appears to be now a vacant lot, was once upon a time a, we believe a parking lot. And our intent, that's, uh, we just have to tilt a little bit, uh, our intent is to take that now abandoned lot, which was a parking lot, and we reinstated as a parking lot, um, the drawings.
I'm not sure it was a parking lot. It will, I, I, I don't think you can state that, Mr. Betts.
I have reason to believe that. That's my opinion, but I can't state it as a fact.
That's your assumption, right?
Well, I, I could show you why, and now, we're a little upside down. What we're getting. There are two curb cuts into this now grassy field. Uh, one curb cut, one more spin and we're home.
Donna, are you familiar with this particular, I, I think you, you were the zoning officer involved, so. I, I know. So he's, he's making an assumption it was a parking lot at one time. I can't make that assumption.
It's an educated, it's an educated assumption, and let me just explain why.
Yeah, let, let me say.
Again, it's not that, this is my.
Okay.
We have a curb cut here on an apron going to, uh, from the north, Monroe down into this now grassy. We have a second curb cut on Bond Street from the east. Uh, it's a curb cut and it's an apron going into the, into this area. There's really no reason to have two curb cuts and two aprons to go into what was a park or even a resident, or residence. And there's no reason to believe that.
Unless it may have been a commercial application there.
Again, I can't prove one.
Right, so you really can't make those statements, so, but, so I, 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 again, say the same, make the same statement. You really don't know.
Um, can see now, the existing building, and the lot, the lot is five thousand square feet. The footprint of the building is one thousand five hundred square feet. And presently, it's meeting the, uh, building coverage ratio of twenty-five percent. The proposed, uh, addition of the stairs is now putting us above the twenty-five percent. It's getting us up to twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent. So one of the waivers we're seeking is permission to build the stairwells, which is a health and safety issue, and that did, uh, to our detriment because it's putting us above the allowable limit for, for coverage. So that's, that's one of the barriers we're asking for.
Can I stop you right there? I have a kind of bigger picture question. Have you purchased this lot yet? This supposed parking lot?
Yes.
Is it going to be like that one application that if we approve this, it has to?
It's one lot.
It is one lot, okay.
It is one lot.
One property.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm looking at the historic aerials, and as far back as nineteen seventy-nine, it's grass.
As far back as nineteen seventy-nine, it was grass? Is that proving your, is that proving your, your conjecture?
Yes. And I'm willing to concede, um, as you can see, uh, the applicant is proposing to put a buffer. He's got four cherry trees, two maple trees, quite a bit of shrubbery that he's, is, uh, putting a buffer in. He already has the property in the, the east, up to the west, I'm sorry. And based on state standards, we need six parking stalls. So they're drawn in six parking stalls. Uh, the city of Asbury Park said we need four parking stalls. If we have concerns about impervious surface, we could potentially reduce it down to four parking stalls. Uh, another thing we would propose is using, uh, instead of asphalt, using a turf block. Uh, if you're familiar with it, it's paver stones where fifty percent of it is actually grass. It's planted with, with grass. And somehow the grass survives, and, uh, that provides a fifty percent, uh, permeability.
So right now, you, this particular building, is it occupied?
Yes, yes.
So where are they, are, are they people who park their cars? Where is that?
Mr. Paul, uh, Paul could, uh, address, I believe, they park on the street.
Honestly, I, I think they ride bicycles, to be perfectly honest with you. They don't park in that, in, like, in the, in the lot as of right now.
So there, there is no parking on site, and that's from, from what you understand, you don't even know if they park on the street?
I, I, I don't know if they park on the street, the tenants that live in the house now. Um, the last time the building went through zoning, uh, for the glass, uh, the parking lot was approved. I just don't have that paperwork on me right now. But that was in the le, the last, um, uh, it went through zoning in nineteen eighty-nine.
Nineteen eighty-nine resolution.
Nineteen eighty-nine resolution. It did state that that was, uh, uh, approved for a parking lot and also a small building put on it.
It's in nineteen seventy-eight.
Okay.
Okay, uh, and like I said, the tenants, you know, as of now, I don't think they drive cars.
Well, uh, just one question. What's the state of the parking on Bond Street? Well, uh, just one question, what's the state of the parking on Bond Street that area?
Very busy, yeah, it's all, there's a school across the street, and teachers, uh, park along Bond. Monday through Friday. They actually park in, I think, this eight-point, but it's fine, it's not, not using it.
Thank you, Mr. Egan.
You heard about using the, uh, the turf block, would you be agreeable to use turf block?
Yeah, the turf block.
Is that allowed, though, for a parking lot? Doesn't, doesn't it have to be, unfortunately, have to be pavement?
So?
Okay, I swear, did I swear?
Yes.
Did I swear?
A certain percentage, or something?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remember the language in the ordinance, like durable surface or something like that. That surface would support vehicles, I have no problem with it from that standpoint. The ordinance is not clear, from what I recall, on how impervious would be covered there. Uh, most towns would not provide any credit, whether you agree with that or not is up to you. In my opinion, if constructed properly, it can work, if constructed properly. And it, it'll support vehicles as well. And there's various products to do it, um, some look better than others, you know? If that helps.
Unless you wish that we make the pads for the cars actually to fit asphalt.
Well, first, we have to come to the decision whether it's a three-family or not a three-family, right? And then we have to decide if there's even going to be a parking lot there. And then we have to decide how many units go in there, and how many cars are gonna be parked. So, we're a long ways off yet, Mr. Ryancheck.
Didn't want to get too far ahead, but we were trying to be helpful. Some other waivers and conditions that we're hearing?
Yes, uh, your, your board engineer has prepared a review letter. There are a number of items here that are amiss on the drawings, and we would request temporary waivers for them. I'd be glad to itemize each one for the record if you'd like. Technical waivers in the sense of, um, the zoning comparison table, which compares, um, our proposed use and the, the allowable for this zone is on the site plan page, and it should be on the cover page. That's what I would call it, the technical variance, we would request a variance for that. And I-
So, I'm gonna stop you for one second, Mr. Betts. Mr. Beekman?
Yes.
A question for you. Would it be best to start at whether we decide that this is a three-family or not a three-family before we proceed into engineering questions, or isn't it best just to decide where, what the use is first?
That's how, how he wants to proceed. You know, we can certainly bifurcate if that's how the applicant wishes to proceed, but that's their choice, not ours.
I, I, I understand that, but I, I, I'm throwing it out there, Mr. Ryancheck.
We could do it that way, we have the planner-
So, I mean, to me, I think that was probably a better way to start, to say, if you've got our approval from that perspective?
We'll, we'll, we'll sub out.
Definitely interpretation?
We'll, we'll have Ms. Coffin testify, yeah. Any questions that the engineer has?
I can come back.
I, I think we need you, for you to come back, Mr. Betts. I, I, I appreciate your testimony at this point, but I, I feel that we need to start at some point, and the best point to start at is what we consider this property to be.
That would, that would be fine.
Okay.
I believe the board knows Ms. Coff- Coffin, but she'll swear and present her credentials.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony given during these proceedings, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did.
Say your name for the record.
Allison Coffin, C O F F I N.
Could you just review some of your credentials for us, Mr. Ms. Coff-
I am still a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. And I'm still certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners.
And you've testified before the city of Asbury Park zoning board plan?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Okay. So, the applicant tonight is requesting your permission to modify what is an existing three-family residence by substantially modifying the exterior, I'm getting there. And minor modification to the interior, as well as making some improvements to the site. As far as the exterior, the applicant is requesting permission to construct a staircase on the outside to provide access, direct access to the second floor, and modify the exterior of the building to provide a much more desirable visual appearance, appearance. And for the- construct a six-parking space, parking lot, on the north side of the site. The site itself is a rectangular corner lot. Fire block to the immediate- East of the site is occupied by an elementary school. The site to the immediate north of the site, across Monroe, is a commercial site with a parking lot. The sites to the immediate west and south of this property are residential properties, one of which is currently under renovation, is the one on Bond. Commercial use is located behind the site to the southwest, and there's a high-rise apartment building located diagonally across the Monroe-Bond intersection to the northeast. And most of the other sites in the vicinity of the subject site are commercial in nature. So, the site is located in the R-one single-family residential zone. The existing use, the three-family residence, was not a permitted use in the zone. Uh, the site did receive zoning board approval for commercial office- Offices on the first floor, and a single-family residential use on the second and third floors in eighty-nine. So consequently, the current permitted use of this site is that of a mixed use of commercial office and residential use. It should be noted that the granting of the use variance that we're requesting tonight would be to legitimize the mixed use of the site for three families as a permitted use, as opposed to the pre-existing non-conforming use, which is not a permitted use at all. The, the commercial use is not permitted at all in the R-one zone, whereas residential is. So, we're requesting a D-one variance to modify the approved use from that of a mix of commercial and residential use to a strictly residential use, however, it would be multifamily, which is not permitted, hence the use variance. Uh, the applicant is also requesting a D-five variance for the density that's proposed, associated with the mixed use on the, on the lot. It's my opinion that this would be subsumed within the use variance, should the board grant it for multifamily on the property. Bulk standards, the lot conforms for lot area and width, and there are some existing non-conformities for the structure that's on the property, and that's the front yard, the side yard, the rear yard, the number of stories, and the FAR, all of which are consistent with the prior approval from eighty-nine. A new relief is being requested by this applicant for the front yard setback, as relates to the proposed stairs to provide access to the second and third floor, and the AC unit and cantilevered AC unit platform, or, which are both located slightly within the front yard. And there's some design exceptions being requested, uh, the location of the parking within the front yard setback, the buffer depth around the parking, uh, wheel stops within the parking lot, and parking lot landscaping. So, when we look at the parking, there's a total of six parking spaces being proposed under the current plan. Uh, the RSIS would require six parking spaces, uh, one point eight spaces for each of the one-bedroom apartments on the ground floor, and two point one spaces for the three-bedroom apartment on the second and third floor. Uh, of these, you could have one and a half spaces being provided on the street. The board has the authority to waive that, but we are proposing all of the parking off-street. The city ordinance itself has a different requirement from the residential site improvement standards, and that would be for four parking spaces. Uh, so consequently, regardless of whether we use the RSIS standard or the city ordinance standard, no variance is being requested for the number of parking spaces. So, and looking at that use variance, it's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested variance, and the granting of the variance would not impair the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance, nor would it result in substantial detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. With regard to the proofs that are necessary for a D-one variance, the test is whether the general welfare is advanced due to the particular suitability of the site for the use, and whether the purposes of the municipal land use law are advanced. In this instance, the proposed change of use, along with the construction of a parking area, would result in a significant improvement to the site, justifying the special reasons to the D-one variance. Specifically, the existing approved legal use of the site is a mix of commercial and residential use with no onsite parking. The parking requirement is for seven off-street parking spaces for the approved use, and none are provided. The proposed use requires six or four, depending on whether we use the city ordinance or the RSIS, all of which can be provided onsite. Consequently, the site is particularly suited to the proposed use, more so than the approved, uh, use of a mixed office and residence. The site is in a zone that is limited to residential use. The current approved use of the site includes a commercial use. The proposed use is strictly residential, which brings the site more into conformity with the zoning plan's intent of this area being residential only. The exterior of the building will be significantly improved in that it is the intent of the applicant to redo the outside of the building and provide a more cohesive appearance for the property. There would be significant improvements with regard to access to the second and third-story apartment, and that the exterior access is provided on the north side of the building with that open staircase, which is highly visible, as opposed to the creepy alleyway entrance that currently exists. Say, as, as a woman, I, I would not want to use that entrance. There will, there would be significant improvement to the impact of the site on the availability of on-street parking in the area. The parking demand will be decreased by the change of the use from office to residential on the first floor. The current parking requirement, as the building is approved to be used, would be seven parking spaces. Uh, that would be two for the dwelling on the second and third floor, and five for the office on the, on the first floor, where none is currently provided off-street to support the site. The proposed change in use reduces the parking requirement to four or six, and this off-street parking will be provided on the site to meet the need. Uh, based on that, it's my opinion that the following purposes of the municipal land use law are significantly advanced by the granting of the requested use variance. One, to encourage the municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, uh, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters, space, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including residential uses, to promote a more desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. The proposed development and use, in my opinion, will have minimal negative impact on the surrounding properties. The intensity of the use of this site is being reduced from the approved mixed office and residential use. The approved commercial use is being eliminated in its entirety. The number of bedrooms in the upper unit is actually being reduced from three, uh, from four to three. The architecture and materials will be a significant improvement over the current visual character of the property. And the provision of parking onsite would be a significant improvement, both in reduced need and increased supply. I can go through the bulk variances now, as well?
Well, I, I, I just want to ask you one question at this point. If you had to describe the hardship that would be involved with us providing this use variance to Mr. Egan and Mr. Egan, um, what would that be?
Well, hardship almost never applies to a use variance.
So-
It's, it's for the bulk standards, the C-one and the C-two setbacks, you know, whether you physically can do something on the site or not. I think I've seen hardship for a use variance twice in the nearly twenty years I've been doing this. Um, so the standard that we're looking at for the D-variance for a use that's not permitted, isn't whether or not there's hardship. It's whether or not the site is suited to the use, which is a slightly different, um, focus.
And it's your contention that it is?
Yes.
And could you just, in a quick bullet, a number of bullets, tell me what that is?
Well, we have a property that has the legal ability to be used for commercial and residential use, which is more offensive to the zoning than an entirely residential structure. So, we're moving in the correct direction by eliminating the commercial use. And it is in an area that has other multifamily-
So, that's your primary reason?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have to take that into consideration.
Yes.
I'm not sure I agree, 'cause you're increasing that, by us granting this use variance, we, we are granting a very large difference from a single family to a, well, three, three-family. That, that's pretty significant.
Well, no, that, I, I, sorry, I don't mean to be that aggressive. But, but we're not, I'm not asking you to go from a single family to a three-family. I'm asking, what we're asking you is to go from a mix of office and one unit to an entirely residential structure that has three units in it.
But my problem with this, too, Donna, I would ask you, it's not really our job to allow you to be in compliance. You should be doing that yourself, right? Like, why do you need a variance to come in code when you're compliant with code, when you're, like, right now, you're breaking the law, right? 'Cause you're not, it's not actually, you're not using it for what it's zoned for?
Well, it's, it's approved, it has a use variance already to be-
For commercial and residential.
Yes, which is not-
But you aren't even doing that right now.
So, I'm, I'm not doing anything.
So, there, I think there's a problem, though, in, in the logic along those lines. So, the approval was granted by the zoning board for use variance in nineteen eighty-nine. You know, it's not like a site plan approval, um, where you're, you know, you're limited in time. If you don't act for the, um, you know, if the zone, the zoning changes, you, and you haven't perfected your approval or you haven't built your thing, you don't get to build it because the zoning's changed. Um, so use variance is a little different, but if they never actually affected the thing they were granted?
Let's see, we don't know, because the applicant didn't own the property in eighty-nine. So, that, that use variance wasn't granted to the applicant.
Well, there, there could be an issue of abandonment, because it wasn't used as that thing that was approved.
I mean, structurally, it's clearly was, was modified to be-
It was converted to a three-family house at some point, right?
Modified to, for separate units.
And so, I would argue that the mixed use, use was abandoned very soon after the approval, if it was ever actually affected. And so, the, the justification, you know, for the-
So, so-
The intensification of their request-
Considered, Donna, a commercial single-family, or is-
No, 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 it's, it's a three-family house, it's a multifamily building, I mean, any, you know, one of those types of descriptors. It's kind of a, you know, arcane minutia in, in the law as to whether, you know, did their use variance approval for the mixed use, um, ever actually kick in?
If, if the city issued a certificate in two thousand, which is eleven years after the original approval, that that was the legal use of the property, it would logically follow that, that it had actually happened.
But your client has testified that at that time, the building was a three-family house.
Yes.
So, you know, we have a discrepancy in the records, it's, you know, a significant problem for everybody. But the practical application is that it's a three-family house. It sounds like it may have never been the thing that was approved for. And so, you know, any conversations about some improvement or benefit related to changing from a mixed use to a multifamily, maybe, maybe kind of moot. I, I wouldn't put a lot of weight on the value of that. And then the other thing, um- No, no, it's okay, 'cause we'll, we'll come back around to it, I'm sure.
Um, but like, they could come into compliance without coming to us, is what I'm saying.
Well, they would have to build a single-family house to come into compliance, it's an R-one zone.
So, I don't understand how, I guess, and the hardship I'm following-
And again, hardships aren't for relevant, so this type of request. So, what you're evaluating is, what about this property makes it suitable to be a multifamily dwelling with a parking lot, or off-street parking? They're kind of saying that because it can accommodate the parking to support the multifamily use, that makes it really suited, because generally, you can't find, uh, that type of configuration. Even though it's a single-family zone, there are other not single-family uses in the zone, but, you know, that's a kind of a stubble in store.
Basically, you're saying, we, we don't even know if-
But, so you, so you have to, based on whatever Ms. Coffin has told you about the neighborhood and the surroundings, and this particular experience that the engineer and the architect have testified about, those are supposed to convince you that really the best thing, this thing is really suited to be a multifamily dwelling. It may be even better suited to be a multifamily dwelling than a single-family dwelling. And then, you know, we didn't talk a lot about the site, you know, we, we're kind of at this conflict of chicken and egg, you know, is it appropriate to discuss the defects with the configuration of, of the parking, or do we really- with the configuration of the parking, or do we really want to talk about, you know, the use itself? And this happens a lot with use, site plan cases, you know, how, how important does, how does the site work fit into making the use suitable, making the site suitable? So, again, you know, with your knowledge of the area and, and the other uses in the area, and based on the testimony that you've heard, you know, describing the site and the neighborhood, you have to determine that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, hardship, hardship is not a, not a criteria.
But your point is relevant in the sense that maybe it was never used as a commercial site, right? Is that, is that what you're saying, Donna?
Yeah.
It may have been abandoned a long time ago and somehow got converted-
And as a practical matter, it may have always been three families, and if that's how it's always been used, you know, that's what you're, you're weighing. It's, that's what it is. So maybe that proves to you that it's suitable.
But that also kind of conflicts with your defense of this property, then. Would you agree, Ms. Coffin? Then, then you're basically, don't really have that as a bullet point. If it's an abandoned use, then in-
Well, but you, you could still evaluate her argument on, is a mixed use, use more or less intensive than the three-family, multifamily use as part of your understanding and evaluating what's more suited? What is-
Well, based on what Mr. Egan has said, that currently there's no cars. So then we're going to get-
My, my visit on the premises and seeing the, the tenants, I, I don't believe that they own cars.
So we're going to add cars?
You may, you may not. You may still, you may still get tenants who don't own cars.
It's possible.
Yeah.
It's possible. But if, if you're putting a parking lot in, then you're more likely-
Well, it's a requirement of code to, to have off-street parking, so he's trying to give you what you think you want, so, or what the ordinance says you want.
I understand. So I, I'm trying to come to this conclusion where we go with this application. I, I, I'm a little stuck.
And what we have here, we have a property we know has been three-family for twenty years. They, there does not appear to be any legal authority for that use, which is why I didn't take it heavily into consideration in the proofs that I gave the board. However, it has been operating as a three-family use without difficulty, which indicates as a planner that the site accommodates three units quite comfortably. It's in an area of mixed uses where a three-family use would not be offensive. There's multifamily catty corner to the site. And the site, should the board decide it is appropriate, can provide all of the parking that is legally required for the use. I, I don't believe there's any reason to consider the prior approval as having been abandoned. There's no evidence that it was never occupied as such, although I don't have any evidence of an office at that property either. So it is conjecture to say that it, it never happened and that that approval was abandoned.
But you have proof of neither, right?
No.
So-
No, that is a little before when I was a planner.
And a little before I lived here. So I, I, I don't know where we're going, but please continue.
Oh, we, if we can have a short break?
Sure.
That's where we're going.
I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Okay.
Christopher, Russell Lewis?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Christopher Everly?
Oh, boy.
We discussed it with the board's lead. We'd like to carry this to the next hearing and do more research on the prior use of the property, see what we can find.
I think that's a valid, valid proposal, Mr. Rycheck.
And also, too, without, we might gender the actual number, you know, instead of three, maybe two.
I shouldn't show any emotion on my face, right? No, poker face, poker face, poker face, and so sorry.
We have to kind of, this clock, but you, you really is the board better this year or-
I, I think you're right on the right track.
Now, would that require, would that require a different floor plan to do that, or?
Probably, I would think.
All right.
Do you think we could keep the staircase?
I, I can't make any of those promises, Mr. Egan. All I can say is, all I can say is, you're before us for a variance, so.
Planner coming back for questions?
Yes, she's shaking her head yes.
Because it might be, it might be a different variance.
Everyone's coming back. So we, we really didn't finish Ms. Coffman's testimony, I don't think, did we?
No, there's no point in me addressing bulk variances that might change.
Right. So you're, you're definitely going to start over anyway. So let's carry that and come up to a date. Irene, do we have, what, what do we have?
Not that you're right.
No, that's, no, that's ridiculous.
March third.
Okay. How is everybody for March third?
I'm already here.
Yeah, it should be good.
I don't know what I'm here for, but it's in my calendar. Oh, no, my dad's here. It'll be fun.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to carry, I'm sorry?
I'm here on the third. I'm not here on the second meeting of March, but the third I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay? We're good to go?
It's Tuesday, I'm good.
All right, so I'll make a motion to carry the 507 Bond Street Paul and Thomas Egan application to March third, two thousand twenty, without further notice.
I'll sign it.
Thank you.
I'm going there.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
We have to see the resolutions, right? Chris?
We have resolutions, yes.
Jill's ringing, I know.
No, I'm sorry. Hold on, we'll do this real-
I thought we, I thought we wrapped up.
No, that's okay.
Chris, Chris, get them out here.
Could, could everyone please be quiet?
We, the meeting's not done.
We're, we're not done with our meeting.
You can stay, but you just can't talk.
Go ahead, Irene.
Everyone except for Russell Lewis, on the resolution.
I was refused.
Yeah. So this application, we approved, we, we did not approve. We rejected a while ago, and we're just finishing up the resolution. So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for three hundred, three oh two, First Avenue Advanced Development Group.
A second. This is approved to-
That we denied it.
That we denied it.
Okay. And Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
John Potter?
Yes.
Ruthie Ashen?
Yes.
Chris Prigovalich?
Yes.
Tim Flick?
Yes.
And Christopher Everly?
Yes. And I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second, second.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.